So for purposes of MCDCC, we're trying to livestream and so the lesser the load it is on our web infrastructure, the more ideal it is. Well, and so we've got that. So we also have, since this is a, while this is a public meeting pursuant to our rules, we ask that non-members refrain from asking questions during the proceedings. And when the floor is designated to an individual, may it be a member or a candidate this evening, please speak loudly and clearly because there's a central microphone system that is trying to catch all the voices for the Zoom watchers. For those that couldn't be here with us today. And so with that, it is January 3rd, 2023. I call this meeting of the MCDCC to order for the purpose of nominating a candidate to fill the unexpired term within the 14th Legislative District created by the resignation of outgoing delegate and former Majority Leader of the Maryland House of Delegates, Eric Lutke. We are convening this meeting for the purposes because of the authority granted to the Montgomery County Democratic Central Committee under Article 3, Section 13A1 of the Maryland Constitution. And with that said, Madam Secretary, I don't know if I was going to do this, but with that said, Madam Secretary, please, would you please bring, begin with the roll call?
Yep, Andrew Sangre.
Here.
Arthur S. M.
Here.
Barbara Eagle. Ed Fishman. Isa Hadad.
Here.
Jason Spiegel.
On Zoom.
Jennifer Guzman. Jennifer Huseman.
Josie, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Here.
Jim Michaels.
Here.
Lysa Smith. Mark Anthony Robler.
Here.
Marjorie Goldman.
Here.
Marco Rivera. Over.
Here.
Michael Carter.
Here.
Michelle Whitaker. Michelle.
Here.
Nathan Feldman.
Here.
Pam Lookett.
Here.
Peter Whitblin. Rebecca Castillo.
Here.
Ramona Metz.
Present.
Sarah Brand Widow.
Yes.
Bethan Johnson. Seth Brian.
Here.
Trudy Batnagard.
Yeah.
Teresa Warren.
All right. Everyone was mailed a copy of the agenda. Can I have a member to see more proof of the agenda for this evening?
I will too.
Can I have a second? Thank you. Agenda approved. So ladies and gentlemen, we will move into the actual meeting this evening. And so we will first begin with opening statements. Again, I remind all of the candidates to speak loudly and clearly. I'm probably talking too fast, but I asked for that pardon as well, but each candidate note will have five minutes of opening statement. We currently have Michael Delonge right over here. He will be keeping time this evening and he will be holding a card when you have one minute remaining. Then when you have 15 seconds remaining. And then when time has called. And at that point, we will ask respectfully that you wrap up. And then we will move into the Q and A and I'll go over the format for that. So we will begin left to right on this side of the panel and proceed towards the right. And so the first panelist or candidate I'd like to call for the opening statement will be Matthew Post.
I was a member of the Board of Education. I went into schools. That could be a problem. Echo. Am I good to go? Echo. When I was a member of the Board of Education, I went into schools and spoke with students who were recent immigrants to our country. We talked about the challenges of navigating NCPS as newcomers and the traumas and burdens so many carried into school every day. Many of these students were on their own, taking care of siblings, working nights. And over and over again, in these conversations, students would confide in me about the utter lack of mental health supports. Our schools provided languages other than English. They asked what I could do. So I started talking to my colleagues on the school board and whipping the votes for a $750,000 budget amendment, specifically to hire mental health professionals who could support our immigrant students. Now, when I started securing votes, the systems finance people called me to their office. They told me they're to hold off. They said there'd be a better year to do this, better circumstances, a better time somewhere further down the road. They asked me to wait. I told them, we can't afford to wait and we got it done. My name is Matt Post. I come from a family of Jewish refugees. My mom is a social worker and my dad inspects sewage systems. Since public schools made the difference for our family, I was raised to believe in the promise of public institutions as equalizers. Now, growing up in East Montgomery County, you quickly see that that promise goes unfulfilled for too many here. But you also see what could be. We have schools that are failing poor kids, kids of color and kids with special needs along with the resources to build an education system for everyone. Housing out of reach for so many, along with the means to make this community affordable for all. Government services out of reach, government services too difficult to access and the potential to help so many. I know how hard it is to confront those challenges. As an elected member of the school board, I've seen what it takes to negotiate, to make the case, to get big progressive policies passed. As a leader in the gun safety movement, I've seen what it takes to bring more people into our democracy to drive that policy change. And as a nonprofit leader fighting food insecurity in this community, I've seen what it takes to support families when our public policy fails them. So I know what it takes. Progress is not easy, but it can't wait. I don't want another generation to learn in classrooms under the constant fear of gun violence. I don't want another generation to grow up in a community they won't be able to afford. I don't want to force another generation to watch the sea levels rise and their rights rolled back and our futures threatened. That's the perspective I'll add to a legislature where the average age is 56, a voice for urgency for those who will inherit the future we create now. And not just talk about progressive change, but know how to navigate a legislative body and deliver. This community knows I'll be that fighter. It's why 300 voters in District 14 have sent in letters supporting my candidacy. It's why I was elected to the school board with 43,000 votes, including almost 5,000 in D-14. I know this district because it made me who I am. And I am in this race because I love my community and believe our state can do better by its people. I believe we can make Maryland a refuge for trans and queer youth and finally make the Trans Health Equity Act law. I believe we can reach out to those who have lost faith in our democracy and make everyone's voice in our district heard. I believe if we bring the people of our community together, we can pass the country's strongest protections for workers and renters, invest in special education, strengthen Anton's Law, reduce car dependency, support our vets, codify the right to abortion in our constitution. And yes, I believe we can make Maryland the number one public school system in the country and the state with the lowest amount of gun violence. When you go to cast your vote later tonight, I'm asking you to believe as well in the democratic will of this community and the importance of experience and the potential of a new generation and a more just and progressive Maryland. I'm asking for your vote. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pinkelstein.
Good evening. My name is Jody Pinkelstein and it's absolutely a pleasure to be here tonight. I would like to thank all of the candidates that are here and sharing their passion for public service along with me. And of course, all of the Central Committee members that are here because you certainly have had a very difficult job to do, not only to this point, but this evening. I asked you to answer four different questions tonight. The first being, who is the absolute best to understand the needs of D-14 residents and represent them in Annapolis? Who has the most work and experience working on the local and state level? Who currently works well with the D-14 team and who will be able to start seamlessly on day one? I would be absolutely honored if you, I earned your trust and you thought of me when answering all of these questions. In 2010, I ran as a delegate. That seems like a long time ago, but sometimes not so far away. I knocked on thousands of doors during the campaign and have the absolute honor to meet so many people in the district to learn more about their needs. Since then, I truly have worked tirelessly to open doors for residents in District 14 on the local level and in the state level. And it has been my honor to continue to open doors even today through my work for Montgomery County Commission for Women. I've done this by not only with the ideas that I've had, but working together in communities and the team. By being a compassionate and committed voice for women and families, by serving as a strong community advocate for every single person in every single community. That's what I've learned is violence against women has no boundaries and impacts all of us. I'm here today because I know there's so much more that we need to do to help the individuals in District 14. We need to help them both, all of us, we need to help them economically and socially. As some of you already know, Montgomery County may sometimes feel like two different counties depending upon where you drive and where you go. District 14 is on the northern side and blessed with such diversity, not in terms of population, but the urban, suburban, excuse me, and urban. Though D-14 faces some very challenging issues such as economic development, excuse me, economic development, public safety and transportation. They are certainly not insurmountable. The District 14 thus far has done a wonderful job meeting as best as they can the challenges of the community along with by working with the local government and of course, all of the community advocates in the area. I earned my master's in social work community organizing because I truly, truly wanted to make a difference in people's lives. And I am so incredibly grateful that I've had the opportunity to do that, not only to the things that I care about, but my team members and the community. I've been able to help victims of crime directly by providing them food, clothing, shelter, emotional support and of course, working on the local state level to be able to pass impactful legislation to improve everyone's lives and make the community safer. I've also worked to improve access to women's reproductive health care services when I was the Director of Pro Choice Maryland and even now as the Executive Director of the Commission for Women. But I haven't done any of this alone. I've always been part of a team and always been part of a community. My first entree into working into the community is when I worked for a small gun violence nonprofit. And we had one of the first voluntary gun attorneys. It actually in Ashton. It started in Ashton. Then when the dear friend Sue Wemstop, my spirit was tragically killed on Rock Creek Park path while running. We worked together to be able to, we, the Montgomery County Road Rangers, several other organizations, worked exceptionally hard to raise money to install emergency funds on that path. And most recently, I've worked together with the community to turn the Human Trafficking Prevention Task Force into the Human Traffic Prevention Committee to ensure that we meet the needs of human trafficking survivors and anything on that in Montgomery County. On the state level, I've also worked with amazing coalitions to ensure that respondents at protective borders no longer have access to firearms. We've worked to ensure that domestic violence victims have access to the courts even when they're closed. And near and dear my heart is that we've worked exceptionally hard in many two years on this to ensure that rapists after impregnating their victims do not have parental rights. Yes, that just occurred within the last five years. If selected, my priorities will be working with the community to hear what they would like to do, but also passing nation-leading reproductive rights, including a constitutional amendment, ensuring laws that will assist domestic violence sexual assault victim. I once again acknowledge that you have been having a very hard show this evening and every hard candidate tonight will share what they can do or what they will do. I ask that you take a look at my resume, hear me and listen, and I would again be honored if I could show you that I will prove to continue everything that I will be doing in District 14 as a delegate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. So as a public service announcement, there is a gray Honda parked outside and there's a tow truck threatening to tow it. If you drive a gray Honda.
It's not over the second.
So let's see if we can get the comment.
Two, nine, eight, seven.
So we're just going to wait for one of the members to come back before we arrive to this opening.
Should look at. That's the whole.
I need to go off for a few days sometime in January. Waited for my crew to get to a certain point. I want to go make some.
Here it is.
I do. I can actually.
Definitely.
I'm 18.
Other side here.
Okay. All right. We're back this quarter after a free trade. I would like to recognize Mr. Rajendran for his opening remarks. Before you begin, I do want to recognize Pastor Johnson is in, is in the meeting now. And I forgot to recognize the woman, who also forms a committee member. So let the records reflect and please, Mr. Rajendran, proceed.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Raj, Rajendran, and happy new year, everyone. Happy new year. Why am I looking for this? What's my motivation for this job? Why am I here? The second part is, what, I've never been in political office before. So why would I be successful in this D-14 position? I've never been in political office. I'm coming up the first time. So why would I be successful? The third part is, what do I bring to the table? There's a job to be done. It needs certain skills. So what do I bring to the table? Those are the three questions I want to answer. The first part is, why do I want this job? I've been in the US for 30 years now. I've lived in Maryland for 13 years, 30 years in the US and 13 years in Maryland. I've been a lifelong Democratic supporter, lifelong. I've supported many campaigns. I've sent a lot of donations to a lot of people. I've worked on a lot of election campaigns, door knocking and handing out flyers, taking my kids out and I've done all that, but now I want to do more. I don't want to be called a guest during election campaigns. I want to do a lot more. And what really made me active is I really didn't like Trump and everything that Trump had did, I was at the spice. He has literally broken and created a lot of disruptions in between people. So there's a lot of healing to be done. I want to help towards that. And I'm very passionate to protect the democratic rights because I think they're in real danger right now. We need to protect the democratic rights. And I think at this point, I'm at a point where I'm financially able to take a break and help and take this position. That's why I'm ready for this job. So I want to work for D-14 in this position and help and make a difference to my local community, which has given me a lot in the last 13 years. So that's why I want the job. So since I've never been in political office, why would I succeed? That's a very fair question to ask. Why would I succeed? But I've been District 14 for 13 years. I have two kids. The kids have gone to school for the last 12 years. I own, I work in a federal government job. I also have a startup business. I started a minimum. I started a nonprofit. I've been operating this nonprofit, this small business, for the last seven years now. So I'm, I know how the business structure works here. And I know all the local, I know the school system. I brought the school. I know how the local, I'm a consumer of D-14 services. I know the infrastructure. I consume all the services. So I know what's good and what's lacking in our, in our environment. And at the macro level, I'm very well versed in the democratic national agenda. I know all the initiatives. I've read so much of the call of it. Now, I want to make sure that the local D-14 is able to support all the national objectives. Gun control, climate change, abortion rights, affordable college housing, all those national initiatives we should support from a local district. And that's where, that's where I can help. So these are the reasons why, even though I've not been in political office before, I can help from, 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 I haven't, I can, I can help. So that's fine. I said, why I want the job and how I can function in the D-14 position. What do I bring to the table? That's a brilliant part of it. The job to be done. How are you going to do it? What's your skill set? So I have been in federal service for, I've been in service for 30 years now. 70 years in the private sector. I have 13 years in government projects. Okay, 13 years in government projects. I've run away for, I work for the USC. I've handled federal projects, state projects, local projects. I have a track record of execution. What does that mean? I get stuff done. And all the projects I get stuff done. I can give a lot of assessments, awards, recommendations that I've received from people which tells me, hey, this guy gets the stuff done. That people actually have written emails to me saying, okay, this guy gets the stuff done. So that's what I'm done. So my track record is important. And second quality, I know how to listen. I know how to, oh my God, these seconds are about a 60 minute. So I listen to, I listen to my constituents in all my, my PHS project for 75,000 users. You can't, your plan said, be fortunate if you don't listen to your stakeholders. So I listen. Team sport and fight for your share. These are two things I will bring to the table. Team sport and fight for budgets. I've given hundreds of presentations that I fight for my project time, get funding and get, get the stuff done. That's what I do. And that's what I will do for the D-14 position.
Thank you very much, Chief Chair and Vice Chair and distinguished members of the MCDCC. My name is Paul Geller and tonight I'm here to ask you a simple request to please vote for me for delegate for District 14. For the last decade, it's been my honor to represent the 161,000 students of MCPS in advocacy, both at the county level and at the state level. And I've been very fortunate to work with a lot of great advocacy partners over the years to get more than $1 billion in additional investment to our schools. And the only reason why this was possible was people shared with me what they needed. As a county PTA leader, I would travel around the entire county, hear what people's needs were. And I'd listen and I would take them in aggregate. And then I would decide along with my friends how we could best go about getting the job done for the people that we represent. If you collect me to this spot tonight, there are three main areas that I'm going to focus on in Annapolis. The first is education and the environment, which to me is connected. The second is the economy and the third is seniors. When it comes to education in the environment, the first thing that I want to do is on all 1,427 of our public schools that are currently either lacking solar panels or where solar panels would work, I want to put solar panels on. Want a statewide bond issue to make that possible. Why? Saves a tremendous amount of operating budget funds. Operating budget funds are what are used by the 24 jurisdictions here in Maryland to fund staff salaries, counselors. It's very necessary to free up these funds. I also want to make sure that we have universal extracurricular activities available to our students. The second thing that I want to do that the state's responsible for is I want to make sure that the state funding goes wherever possible and practical to net zero energy construction school buildings. These are technological marvels that have solar panels on the roof. They're highly energy efficient. They have geothermal energy systems. But best of all, and I've been in two of these buildings, one Discovery Elementary School in Arlington, Virginia, another at Halliburton Academy in Baltimore City. They're a great learning tool for our students. They learn STEM on their Chromebooks. They can see how much energy is being generated by these buildings. They can see how much energy their buildings are using. The best part of all is it helps the environment as well and it teaches these kids STEM, which is so important these days. The third thing is a personal crusade I've been on for eight years with our state delegation. They've heard me speak about this many times. They've heard me speak about this many times. And that is getting a greater percentage of casino gaming revenue into our schools as was implied and promised when we went into the polls in 2008 and again in 2012. We were told that the primary purpose was to raise revenue for education. Today, thirty-eight and a quarter cents of every video lottery terminal dollar, which is slot machines, goes to our kids. That's not the primary purpose. Only fifteen cents a table game is given to our kids. That's not good enough for me, and it shouldn't be good enough for you. Tonight, I asked Tannen Dembélé to be here. She is one of the All-Star MCPS students, if ever there was one. She's risen up through the ranks, the NAACP's Act So Competition, as a skilled poet. When on days where I don't win victories in Annapolis, I say to myself, I can't quit because we have wonderful students like Tannen and so many thousands and thousands of others that deserve the best measure that we can give them. And in order to make that happen, I give you my promise. I'm not going to take a penny of corporate money, PAC money, or special interest money ever, for as long as I serve, in four years or twelve years. I think it's very important not to do so. I'll only take contributions up to $250 in the billions. Getting back to my platform, the second thing I want to focus on.
He's very good.
It's very important that we supercharge the economy here in Montgomery County and provide people who want to live the American dream the opportunity to learn how to own their own business and start it. I want a Maryland Innovation Center right here, like they have in Howard County. I took lessons there for ten weeks, just finished up about a month ago. It was fantastic. $15 taught you entrepreneurial skills. And finally, for seniors, they have to do better by our seniors. Some of them are moving out because they can't afford taxes in the county and the state. I want to make sure that they can live their golden ear tier. They've given their full measure to our county, and they deserve to stay there. My name is Paul Geller. I want to be a part of the District Fourteen team, and I want to make things happen for them and for you. Thank you.
Thank you, the Central Committee for carrying me out in person. I appreciate that. My name is Paul Schwartz, and as many of you know already, I was a federal official for the federal government for over thirty-five years. I was Director of Trade Enforcement, the ICSS Customs Service. And then when Department of Homeland Security stood up, I moved to there. And then after Katrina, I was asked to go on the FEMA. In that role, why this is important is that I was intricately involved in development and implementation of national level of legislation and, this is importantly, accompanying regulations. That experience, combined with my advocacy work at the state level, places me in position to hit the ground running if I become fortunate enough to become the delegate representing District Fourteen. As an advocate at the state level, I was a relentless advocate for the Fire and Safety Act way back in 2013. When I registered to testify there, you had to give either an A for against the legislation or, or an F for for the legislation. Guy next to me was an A. He was number two thousand over two thousand. I was for the legislation. My number was number twenty-two. Kathleen DeMay pointed out to me that it was important for both sides to give a voice to the committee for, for both sides. And I was proud to do that. I'll add that when I ran for county council this past year, that Moms and Men Action did designate me as a safety candidate. Another example is the Retirement Tax Reduction Act of 2022. I was instrumental in that passage, in that, in the passing of that legislation. I worked years to finally get that done. And when the sponsors of that bill, Democrat Sarah Alfred and Republican Steve Hershey, reached out to me to help craft the legislation, evidence that I can work both sides of the aisle. As far as that legislation goes, senior migration to tax-friendly states like Delaware or Pennsylvania are an issue for seniors. AARP pointed out that now in Maryland, that there are more people fifty years of age and older than there are students in our school system. But senior, that legislation is a lot more than if I throw something to the seniors. It's an economic issue because when those seniors leave the state to go to Delaware and Pennsylvania, they take their tax money, their buying power, and their community service with them. There was a, a survey done by Bankrate and also Money Wise Magazine that placed Maryland fiftieth at a fifty state as the worst place which to retire after that legislation was passed. And I'm not sure if it's only because of that, but certainly it helped. This latest Bankrate survey put Maryland at number forty-four. So moving in the right direction. My experience at both the federal and state levels of government places me in position to tackle key issues. Pharmaceutical pricing, all right? We know that there was a cap put on, on insulin at the federal level if you're on Medicare. Well, what about if you're not on Medicare? The state has to take that up. With pharmaceutical pricing, this is interesting. Research and development costs are applied only to domestic sales, not foreign sales. For the same exact product, by the same exact pharmaceutical. There's something wrong with that. It couldn't get into the Inhalation Reduction Act in federal government. We need to address that at the state government. Public collection financing at the state level. I was on the finance, a public financing committee at the, for my county, and we instituted that. We need to do it at the state level. Connecticut, they use abandoned property to fund their program. We need to look into that to fund our program. Codifying what constitutes a commercial sale. There is no complication of commercial sales at the federal level. We need to do it at the state level to try to close that control loophole and not let personal exemptions be an excuse to have commercial sales. And incentive to purchase long-term care insurance, that is critical to the economy as well. Medicaid is 25% of the budget of Maryland. And nursing homes is a key part of that, that expense. If we can incentivize to get long-term care at an earlier age, when, when the price is lower, and also to incentivize people to be able to keep it and not have the premiums keep going up, we, that will help the economy overall. And on that note, we have to bring in dynamic scoring. Right now, the fiscal note is always based on a five-year window of the short-term impact on revenue. We need to, bless word, we need to bring it in to dynamic scoring, where you look at the long-term benefit of the program and as far as it helps the economy. So I'm Paul Schwartz, and I'll wait for questions. Thank you. I'll add one thing. At the end of this process, if, if Jim Jordan ends up being the selectee, we're all going to be kissed on.
Thank you. I'm concerned that, can everyone here, back there and everything? Good. I'll try to keep my voice about this level. My name is Doug Terry, as you may know. How in the world could you vote for me if you don't know me? I want to give a little bit of an introduction to myself. I hate sentences that start with I and I, 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 but I have to, there's no one else here to speak for me. Some of what I will mention, not even my own wife Janet knows. We don't brag to each other, but I have to brag now, I guess, because there's no other choice. Okay, it's one thing to say you're involved in public service, that you love public service. It's another thing to have proven it over a long period of time. I've supplied two high-grade telescopes to a very small school district in South Texas so the kids down there can see the incredible variety of the night sky that they live on. I raised, we raised $2,400 for the victims of flooding an inadequate city to the only farmer's market. We raised an additional $3,000 for Ukraine, some of which was a major part of our deduction, I mean, of our donation. This was raised too, also through the farmer's market. One time I got a notice from the bank, our mortgage had been paid off. No, it hadn't. It's $130,000 remaining on the mortgage. Wisely or not, I called them and told them, you don't really want to give us your, our house, do you? So they took it back. If I had waited, we would have had $130,000 forgiven. I participated in hurricane relief ever since Katrina. I want to say directly, I put myself at risk. I don't want to be too dramatic. My life on the line to some certain small degree. In Hurricane Harvey, Maria in Puerto Rico, another in North Carolina. Now, this, I formed a nonprofit called the Emergency Response Network, and it's, we hope to grow it larger to do more public service. And that is an ongoing effort. Oh, this year, in 2021, last year, I was able to warn the people of Fort Myers, Florida, to evacuate twenty-four hours earlier than the local media. Let me skip right along here. There are issues that are very important to me. I'd like to see a truth and reconciliation commission similar to what was done in South Africa so that we in Maryland can lead the nation in finding and identifying the source of these dragged, dragged-on problems that seem to go forever. And I would like to have a broad participation in that. I'd like to see an investment fund, an innovation investment fund, where the state of Maryland pays a little bit into getting small businesses started. I'd like to see a master's driver's license program. Why do we give a license at sixteen, seventeen, and then send you on your way? It's not a good idea. I'd like to see people learn more about how to react. Too many people are dying. Too many people are getting maimed on our highways. We need to do something. We need to have a more educated public. One final thing, evictions. Big corporations are buying houses and apartment buildings and jacking up the red thirty, forty, and fifty percent. That's not right. We need to find a way to put a cap on that. We need to be looking ten to twenty years ahead and doing everything we can. It's a heavy responsibility to take this on such short notice. I feel we must revive, we must change this process. We must include the public. We must have more actual democracy, not the facade of democracy. Thank you very much for listening to me. That's it.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My defect of public side was started at the back of thirteen districts. A small facility is named Muslim Community Center. Two thousand and three, whenever all the boardroom secretary and president was telling, we cannot afford the male practice incident of $70,000. I, as the treasurer, was telling, if needed, we'll go from door to door and beg for this incident money and establish this clinic. That was in two thousand and three. That owed back to that clinic. Today, that clinic has a budget of $3.5 million. Almost $1 million is being financed in the form of grants of miller with Montgomery County Department and the remaining other donors and institutions. Ladies and gentlemen, my, my respected MCDC honorable members, I am a fifth-generation immigrant with operational credential like CPA, CDFM certified government financial manager. And at the top of that, the executive jury doctor, a law graduate graduation from the Concord Law School of Party University, inspired by the famous scholar, legal scholar, Mr. Arthur Miller, who was the thirty-six-year professor of Harvard. I saw that one and determined that I must have been a student of this gentleman and have my degree. I am happy today that I got that one. At my, my family, I brought it. I'm a first-generation immigrant. All of my kids, all of them got that undergraduate from the Henry University. One of them, I tell her, the double-star she got the undergraduate master's degree from Georgetown University and D and P doctoral degree from Columbia University. Ladies and gentlemen, that is not my, I know how to bring out the keys. I know this is a diluted society. Family is being broken, and how hard it is to get the emotional and motivation into the keys to be prepared for the future generation of United States of America. I am, I am happy and proud that I belong to. My, my public defect of public side, I know a lot of people over here are elected. I was not elected. I was appointed by the governor at the state level, as a Mactna, as a member of the Mactna. I saw that one, how the resignation is being done at the state level and the federal level. You'll be surprised to hear that I am the only person among the state of Maryland who was big and exciting for the state department, where I had the opportunity to work in USA, more than $1 billion education. I was responsible. Ladies and gentlemen, I will not forget that day, whenever we were, we are summoned, we are called, we had been called to the USA headquarters, where I say, I could not, I report, discipline a report of the foundational inquiry of six thirty-two A and six thirty-two B. I am, I'm glad to say that in four, four letters, I like to say what will be our, our concentration priority. That is, I say, E A J S, E G R S, business, family, job creation, and school. At the same time, environment, gun control, reproduction rights of our women generation. Fifty-one percent of the district are women. And senior, senior, I am the guy who are in Washington Center for Aging Services as the Assistant Director of Finance. I, I contributed to the fund for the, for the one, poor resident to go to transportation. It's all there. I tell that, whenever I interacted with the president, he said, what do you want? I said, nothing. Today, I want something from you.
Hi, I'm Bernice Mary North, and tonight I'm hopefully asking all of you for your votes. Stronger, safer, and healthier communities is the heart of why I'm running for this appointed position, to serve in the House of Delegates, along with the delegation behind me. What does that look like? Fighting for more resources, being smart on public safety, making sure we're engaging more of the diverse community that makes up District Fourteen. Now, the demographics of District Fourteen are changing, as with the county. And our District Fourteen delegation is strong. But I believe that my addition to the team is going to bring a new perspective based on lived experiences. I grew up as a black immigrant in Montgomery County with a variety of different cultures surrounding me. So I was able to learn and navigate those different cultures that last, that led to different networks that I've built up over the years that are quite diverse. Now, as an MCPS student, I remember what it was like to be on free lunch. I remember what it was like to not be able to do activities because you couldn't afford it. It was because of my persistence and the care of others that led me out of those circumstances. And it's why, when I go to Annapolis, I'm not going to spend five years with fourteen. I'm going to buy for the resources for our youth in District Fourteen. Now, I went out to law school at Howard and became a prosecutor here in Aaron County, where I fought for victims' rights. I worked to appeal families and protect communities. And part of that work included fighting for those who are victims of hate crimes. In Montgomery County, we're dealing with the rise of hate crimes, especially antisemitism. So I believe my background's going to benefit Annapolis in that way. I'm currently a lawyer, have my own law practice, where I help District Fourteen residents achieve fair outcomes, which has led me to spark ideas of legislation that can work towards a fair justice system for all of us. Now, I've also chaired several I've also chaired several of county boards. And in that, in that role, I was able to work with diversity of board colleagues and community members. And when there were challenges, we met them with communication, collaboration, careful deliberation. Because it takes courage to hear what everyone has to say, because sometimes everybody wants to hear what everyone has to say. But that courage would strengthen and unites communities. Now, I also was a member of, I was a member of the first graduating class, actually the first to graduate from the immigrant class, as well as a prior member of the Young Democrat Executive Board. So I know what it takes to have an effective campaign. And that's critical to strengthen Democratic Party, as well as help all of you on Central Committee and uphold Democratic ideals. Now, I've had a chance to assist District fourteen residents. So my priors are going to include economic development, public safety, safe affordable housing, transportation that's accessible and affordable, schools, nutrition, food insecurity, and a fair, equitable system for all. Now, I also want to advance our county's transportation priorities, because a number of them involve District fourteen, including Leightonsville and Burnsville. Not only that, I want to make sure that we're bringing money to our colleges and M C P S schools in District fourteen, particularly with the new, uh, Montgomery College of Abboton East County. These are things we're gonna fight for when I'm in Annapolis with the team behind me. Now, your role on Central Committee is not amazing. You have a lot of candidates. But I'm asking to go beyond what is comfortable and find the next amazing voice for Annapolis to join this amazing team behind me. A voice that deals with the suffering businesses in our district. A voice that deals with those who are economically disadvantaged. A voice to unions, a voice to immigrants. Because, ladies and gentlemen, I share a lot of those stories of District fourteen residents. I walked in their shoes as a kid and as an adult. I am their story. And that's the story that's taken me to Annapolis. So tonight, your decision is a difficult one. There's a lot of candidates. But I thank you for your service, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start by thanking everyone here, all the committee members, those I had the opportunity to speak with over the past few weeks, and my full understanding to those who were not available over the holidays. I know you all have a very difficult decision, and yet you wanted to make here tonight. As many of you come to know, I'm a lifelong resident of Montgomery County, and I've spent most of my life in or near District fourteen. I care deeply about this community. And I'm fully committed, whatever path I might be on after tonight, to continue fighting to ensure that we truly are able to realize the potential of this community and to preserve it for our children and our grandchildren. To make sure that our state and local governments work together to address the pressing needs of working families, making sure that all of the opportunities and blessings of this great state are available and accessible to all. There are many pressing issues facing our district and our state. I've discussed many of them with members here tonight in recent weeks, and I'll discuss them further as we continue. But there is an overarching goal that has driven both my grassroots activism over the years and that drives me here tonight to seek the honor of representing District fourteen in the House of Delegates. And that is to give voice to those who are often ignored, excluded, and written off our political process. My candidacy is about giving voice to the essential workers that make our lives possible. People like the Kennedy High School students I taught and would see working in our local grocery stores. They had taken up jobs keeping our shelves stocked while their parents had been laid off during the pandemic. They are the reason that we were able to eat. People like my brother, a fellow District fourteen resident and auto mechanic, who kept our vehicles running, exposing himself daily to the threat of this new virus. He contracted COVID on at least three separate occasions long before vaccines were available, as did so many others. And they did this so that we could be able to get where we needed to go. People like the teachers, paraeducators, cafeteria workers, security guards, bus drivers, and so many others who worked tirelessly to make sure that our kids were fed and nourished, who show up every day to do the hard work of guiding our young people. People like my union brothers and sisters in M C E A and S C I U Local 500, many of whom I joined heading down to Annapolis to lobby for bills like the Time to Care Act that passed last session, and for whom I fought for as the elected service representative of Kennedy High School when I was a paraeducator. People like the District fourteen tenants that I have worked to organize in communities like Snowden Ridge, Castle Boulevard, and many others. Tenants forced to live in dilapidated housing, dysfunctional heating, bad plumbing, and mold. Tenants who complain of gas leaks in their building and then turn around and beg us not to report it to the county because they fear, quite rightly, that they could end up homeless with nowhere to go. Companies like my own that have struggled after our battle with eviction due to an unlicensed landlord, struggling to afford their own home. And when these families are priced out of ownership, they enter the rental markets, further driving up demand and prices, and yet again displacing the most vulnerable. People like the restaurant workers that I have spoken to here in District fourteen that complain of spending two, three, or even four hours commuting on buses to make it to their jobs, who struggle to find childcare when their employers demand they show up for shifts on a few hours' notice. The Uber and the babysitter cost me more than I am even making tonight. People like my high school friend, Enkariu, a sanitation worker for the Maryland Department of the Environment, who commutes an hour every day to our county, the county he has lived in for decades, to clean up our trash and then return to Baltimore, where he can actually afford to live. These are the stories that all too often go unheard and unheeded in the halls of power, be they in Washington or in Annapolis. And these are the people whose voices I will fight day and night to bring to the table in Annapolis. We've accomplished great, many, many great things here in District fourteen and in the county and state at large. Great schools, great parks, protecting our watersheds and green spaces, and so much more. But these things are slipping away from us. Our children cannot afford to live in the communities we have worked so hard to build for them. The people who teach our children, pick up our trash, drive our buses, wait our tables, cannot afford to live in the very communities they serve. And those are the injustices I will work every day to rectify in the House of Delegates. First off, I want to say a good evening and hearty thank you to my Moco friends, D fourteen neighbors, fellow candidates, M C D C C members, and the D fourteen delegation. Thank you for doing your part in helping to get us to this important evening. Thank you for doing your part to help us get here tonight. As most of you know, we have a mere eight days till a delegate nominated tonight begin the vital work of District fourteen. We also have very big shoes to fill with the departure of Delegate Eric Luke, who has provided over a decade of dedicated service in the Maryland General Assembly, as well as needing to work alongside our top-notch Senator Zucker, Delegate Kaiser, and Delegate Queen, who have over forty years combined legislative experience in the N G A. As such, there is only one very important question in front of us tonight. Which one of us is best prepared to try to fill the shoes of Delegate Luke on January eleventh? After twenty years of public service on the front lines, first in combat in Iraq and Afghanistan, currently as a thankful foster parent for the three wonderful kids, and now having spent the past five months as a special assistant to our Lieutenant Governor-elect Aruna Miller, I am ready to do my part in serving my neighbors. Specifically, my team and I are best prepared on January eleventh because of three reasons. First, we've done our homework. Our team is the only one here that launched our grassroots campaign to serve as one of the District fourteen state delegates we started over thirteen months ago, with the sole focus of listening, learning from our diverse county, from East County to Up County. We knocked on twelve thousand doors, made a hundred thousand phone calls, and just finished our eleventh town hall last month. After we placed just behind Delegate Luke in the July primary, I've been truly fortunate to join Aruna Miller on the campaign trail as we listen and learn from our neighbors across the state, this county, as well as D fourteen. So our team does not have to guess what we must prioritize in getting past, starting on January eleventh. I've heard very clearly that there's three priorities in our community, and I'll be able to work alongside our D fourteen to do that. Priority one, continue to support to our frontline workers from educators, social workers, and first responders. Priority two, enhance work on helping make our communities safer, greener, and more livable and walkable. Priority three, further protect our vulnerable communities with expanded access to affordable healthcare, housing, and a living wage. Second reason, I am ready, I know firsthand the hard work in crafting effective policy that helps our communities most in need. I recently served three years in the halls of Congress, the last year as a single staffer and policy director of twenty-six members of Congress. I know about the need to go to the front lines to hear directly about policy problems and gaps, then meeting with advocacy groups that have expertise on systemic policy challenges, and then doing a whole lot of cojoling with legislators and their staff, including Donuts and Hot Cocoa, as long as many of you know, to find common policy ground that we can actually pass. In fact, last year, I worked with twenty-six members of Congress and their teams have six bills signed into law, including a bill to help my fellow Iraq and Afghanistan veterans and their families, which President Biden supported last year. The last reason, we all know you can have the best policy and plan in the world, but you must be ready to build a coalition to get these turned into law and reality. Building diverse coalitions is hands down my favorite part of this work. As my team were hearing from our neighbors on the campaign, we heard time and again about the tragic shooting in January of last year in the Bruder High School and how we nearly lost a fifteen-year-old young man. In response, we invited M C P S educators, parents, students, and the P T S A president from a Bruder to join us for a roundtable to share what happened that day and what challenges we can tackle together as a community. Educators and students shared about the massive need for additional mental health support at our schools, including that we are currently two hundred percent understaffed for school psychologists. If given the opportunity, I'd love to be able to help build a similar coalition in Annapolis and do my part to help get signed into law Maryland House Bill seven five two from the last session that is focused on school psychologist recruitment and gets much closer to the mental health support laid out and recommended in the blueprint. Finally, and most importantly, in little more than a week, we are ready to serve because we've done our homework. I know policy and how to build grassroots coalitions. So M C D C C members, thank you so very much tonight for your hard work, and I'd be absolutely honored to earn your vote tonight and get to the important work starting on January eleventh. Thank you so very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your opening remarks. We are going to proceed into Q and A session. As the instruction for email to you all, Q and A will be kept approximately forty minutes, and each member will be allocated one minute to respond to each question that's directed to them. Michael, again, will be keeping time. He will, he will hold up a, which color is it? The yellow one for fifteen seconds and the red folder for time. Keeping in mind, we will be a lot stricter on keeping time for the Q and A, so that way we can get to as many questions as possible. And so we ask that the members, you kindly raise your hands. Cam is going to keep just a roster of all the members that are, the order that they've asked questions in, and we'll be calling one at a time. We also ask that if you've had the opportunity to ask a question, we just want to make sure that everyone around the room does have a chance to weigh in and ask questions as needed. So with that said, we, can we get, I'll start off with at least one. So Scott, are we ready? All right. With that said, I will give the floor to Sarah Brandt, a large member.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all the candidates. My question is, how would you approach the important issue of promoting and motivating public safety in District fourteen, Montgomery County, and Annapolis?
Sir, thank you for that important question. I've heard this on door after door, what does reimagining public safety look like for our communities? So I went to our front lines. I talked to our firefighters. I talked to our law enforcement. And they told me very clearly, forty percent of their calls are mental health related. They would love to work with the county executive to make social worker response teams a real thing. As in, when you respond on to a call, if you have a person experiencing mental health crisis, you don't definitely have to call an ambulance. They go to the E R and they come back on the next street. When we do that, we fail the law enforcement, we fail our first responders, and we fail our community members. We have to break the cycle, get them the assistance they need, so our law enforcement can focus on crime. Thank you. To have public safety, we need to build trust between our communities and law enforcement. And that starts with having professional and accountable law enforcement. I would work in the House of Delegates to empower the police accountability boards to be able to hire independent investigators to deal with issues of misconduct, while at the same time helping to provide resources to those officers who truly are serving their communities in order to keep those communities protected. We also need to recruit more people who are from the communities that they serve, who understand the needs of that community and don't view, don't come in with the mentality of an occupying force. I agree very much that we need to definitely redirect where a lot of our mental health issues go. These are not issues to be addressed in most cases by the police. So we do need to have social worker response teams in other ways to address mental health issues. Also, another part of public safety is traffic. We have a large increase in traffic deaths. And I feel that too much of our enforcement relies on bringing in revenue rather than encouraging public.
I thank you for that question. As the only candidate here who's been a prosecutor and a public safety attorney, public safety is very important for me to change when I get to Annapolis, and I have a holistic view of it. One, we do have to support our law enforcement because it's important to keep all of us safe. So we can't be blind to the imperfections of our criminal justice system. And that is why I was selected to be the reimagining public safety task force in Montgomery County, because I'm able to have that balance, understand the need to keep us safe, but not over criminalize our black youth and other people disadvantaged by the criminal justice system. Now, another element of public safety for me is also how we're structuring our communities. So traffic safety, road safety is critical. So in Annapolis, I want to make sure we're fighting for the right funding to improve lighting in our roads, to make sure we have traffic calming measures, and whatever else is necessary to keep our roads safe. So we can not only keep public safe, but to deal with our Vision Zero goal in our county in 2030. Thank you.
Public safety discussion is basically related to the end cap to bull value of public service. So it should be the gold value of public service. Anybody who's committing for public service must have to know what, why are loopholes are being, being occurring or being occurred. The, the Montgomery County, so far I am, my life in Montgomery County, twenty-four years, my, my whole life in the United States. So I saw that the, the police and firefighters are all dedicated. Even I learned that my fellow swar, whenever our Muslim community was basically owned by some of the people. Then the, how the police came over here and rejected and took the necessary action. But in the regard to the, to the domestic violence, that can be a real issue for public sector. And I believe that, as I indicated in my lecture, I knew that many might have continued.
I don't have the, the answers to all of this question. It's a big question. You need to understand, first of all, we're in a very special, weird time in our nation. Went into a kind of national nervous breakdown with the pandemic. We'd never faced anything like that before, and people had serious mental problems, which is contributing to the killing that's going on. Another question that needs to be answered is, are, are some of our police on strike? I will say I spent over two hundred hours around that, riding with police officers in Texas, Virginia, and Delaware, riding in the front seat with police officers, seeing the difficulties of their jobs. This is a problem we're not going to solve in one day, but it needs a comprehensive approach. And we need to get answers about what is going on with our police officers on our street while still supporting them and supporting their work. Thank you.
I want to build on what Nathan said. Absolutely, we have to build a trust between our police and our communities. One of my suggestions when I was campaigning during the summer was to give incentive to police to live in the communities in which they serve so they become more affiliated with each other to address the issues of that community. But this is several issues, elements of this. Hate crimes, we have to have a presence to prevent hate crimes before they occur and not try to address it after we have a disaster like Spurle Hill and Pennsylvania. But it's not just about crime, it's also about Vision Zero, as Lisa pointed out. Why does it take us so long? I know Craig has put in legislation funding for ladder vision of zero project. We need to build on that. We need to institute intelligent traffic signaling to cut down on traffic accidents. And I think that's all. Oh, and I was a member of Safe Plans. When I was working in Safe Plans, we conduct school safety and security assessments throughout the country. I act what attitude it trains.
First thing I want to do is commend our District 14 team for getting money to expand the only police substation a year or two ago. That was a major lift that we needed to happen on. The other thing we need to do is we need to keep listening to the community. I've constantly heard in my travels around District 14, the need to have more of a police presence in Damascus. That's the western part of District 14. Surely have it. Most importantly of all, I want to make sure that we assist the county with, first of all, they come up with the idea of adding new police districts here, which I think is a wonderful idea. But more importantly, expanding the Kahoots program, which is the program that partners up police, law enforcement specialists with mental health professionals. We need expanded investment in that, and as your state delegate, I will make sure that we achieve that working with my fellow teammates to get that done.
Hi. So I would propose that public safety is a combination of everything. It needs to be a good mix between police and community organization. It has to be a good combination of both. I would also concentrate more on police training. And I am not a big believer in going to the extremes on defund the police. We need to have the police on our side, they need to be well-trained so they can do the duties correctly. I would also advocate for neighborhood watch support. In neighborhoods need to be encouraged to do watch support. You know, they can help to reduce crime in the local areas. And also encourage, I already mentioned community, and also use technology better. You know, take the best practice from different cities, see what works, and make sure that you adopt technologies. I know some cities are using drones, so maybe you can use technology for better safety. And stronger conviction for hate crimes is required. And last one is street lighting. There are many places that there's no street lighting. We need to put fast, effective street lighting.
Thank you so much, Sarah, for that question. That's something that I think a lot about, even how long I've worked on this in my career with the community. It would certainly take a coordinated community approach, and I would ensure that everybody that needs to be at the table is at the table. That would include survivors of crime because they are the leaders in this, especially when we're talking about domestic violence, human trafficking, and other crimes of violence. I would also have the police at the table because they're the ones that are dealing with us all the time. I would, of course, have social workers at the table, psychologists to be able to help with the mental aspects of all of the public health, safety. I would also look at transportation. How can we make our communities much more walkable than they currently are? As a cyclist, I can't tell you how many times I've almost been hit by a car, which is the most frightening feeling. So it would include transportation, include walkability, and ensure that everybody, again, has a seat at the table.
I think when we talk about public safety, you should think about two things. One is police and the other is crime. On police, I agree, we need to have the best of our community serve our community as police officers. It's why I support investing in career pathways in our school so that our police force looks like our community. But police wield an incredible amount of power in our society and our community, which is why, one, we should make sure that they are dealing with violent crime and not mental health crises. And two, when police mess up, when they abuse their power, we hold them accountable. It's why I support strengthening laws like Anton's Law, which passed in previous legislative sessions, but clearly is not working. On the crime point, you know, we're coming off a 35-year homicide high for homicides in Montgomery County. There are non-carceral ways we can address gun violence in our community, like massively invest in violence intervention programs and basic work for survival.
Next question will be on Michelle Whitaker. Michelle? Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you all candidates for signing. I want to just commend every single candidate there for seeking to represent the residents of D-14 and taking the time to engage with all of those members of the committee in different ways. And I do encourage each one of you to please stay engaged in D-14 regardless of the outcome of this and to stay engaged in the Montgomery County Democratic Party. We need more folks who are engaged with our committee, helping to bring residents out for discussions about who represents us and other issues that we will be dealing with. So the two-part question, one, do you support voting reforms like ranked choice voting? And secondly, what would be your top three committees that you would like to serve on? Sorry, top three choices for the committee you'd like to serve on?
All right, so Ms. Whitaker's.
Did you hear that?
Yeah. So Ms. Whitaker's question, just to clarify, if anyone didn't hear, is, one, what is your community labor rate on the support for voting reform like ranked choice voting? And the second part is, what are your top three choices for committee planning in Annapolis? We will go back again with Mr. Tom Smith beginning.
Thank you for that great question, Michelle. It's very important, you know, anything we can do, I knocked on doors to get voter engagement. There definitely is a feeling of disengagement at times where, hey, folks aren't coming to my doors. They do, it's just a couple of months before the primary. So I am big across the board of this public campaign finance reform. We've done it here in this county, we've seen more engagement from that. I would definitely be supportive of ranked choice voting. We've seen it across in several states, Maine, I've worked in Congress, the congressional staff rough there, seeing the wonderful things. It has driven up voter engagement through the roof. And then secondarily, for the committees, I believe in the team concept, as in, where can I best serve? So I'd love to be mentored from the D-14 delegation. Where does a freshman delegate actually have a chance to get on to? For the issues that I care about in the district, I've heard is obviously judiciary committee, a lot of things, whether it's this year for the recreational marijuana in July, as well as the host of juvenile justice issues as a foster parent. And I would love to really focus and make sure our kids in need are taken care of. Thank you.
Mike Frer?
So first, I would say that I am 100% in favor of voting reforms like ranked choice voting and public financing of campaigns. I think that this gives people more direct involvement and real choices in their democracy and can help get a lot more people in our community engaged in the political process. As far as committees, obviously, again, as Tom mentioned, as a freshman member, you're not necessarily going to get your top picks, but my top issue committees would be affordable, would be housing, education, and transportation. Making sure that we have more transportation, public transportation options in D-14, which are widely not available, expanding vocational education opportunities for our high school students, and making sure that everybody has access to safe, affordable housing in our district.
Ms. Mariah North?
Thank you for your question, Ms. Whitaker. I am a fan of ranked choice voting and voting reforms, but it's important, especially for the person who's going to get this appointment, that when you're in Annapolis, relationships are key, and who the committee chairs are are key. So in terms of being actually effective in making that happen, you have to look at the committee members and of these, as well as the chairs, to see what can be done and make these reforms happen. And I do have those relationships through my work, both my work through Maryland as a former prosecutor and as a Maryland native. So if I get the relationships and the right people on board that, then it can happen. But with laughing in Annapolis means some things just take time. Now, with regard to the committee assignments, I am interested in judiciary committee. Give my background as a former prosecutor and criminal defense attorney. I do understand there's a vacancy on that committee. And my second choice would be appropriations, because again, I mentioned earlier, I want to bring home our dollars to help our schools and our colleges. And third, I will also be interested in environment transportation committee as well. Thank you.
Regarding the voter information at the federal level, I think there was huge discussion on that one. We basically, that should be taken as a guide for us at the state level, what they are doing, also support. But we have to have mobilized the public support behind that one. I was involved in engagement of voter campaign during President Obama. Who, I was one of the guys from here, sent to Virginia, and I still remember what it was, the parking docks were changing up. That, having that thing, I believe that the engagement would be very vital for our campaign. And the committee, I refer planning and hold my duty to application and education, application and enforcement. I believe I will be a good candidate for application and body committee, as well as I'm interested in immigration because 36% of the knowledge of this country are done by immigrants in the last two decades.
Thank you. Some jurisdictions are experimenting with the idea of high school students voting at 16 or 17. It's worthy of consideration. Morality has more or less been taken out of our educational system by the idea that nobody knows what morality is. But we should be teaching civic engagement, not only as a vital part of participation, but as a civic duty. Thank you.
I'm all in on ranked choice voting. I think it does a much better job of finding the right candidate. As far as committees, Ways and Means would be at the top of my list. I've testified before that committee so often, how nice it would be to be on the inside looking out instead of the outside looking in. Then the other ones would be healthcare. I know Bonnie Coulson has done a lot of work on that area, and also environment and transportation would be my third choice. But if I had to really rank them, it would be Ways and Means, one, two, and three.
Mr. Geller?
I'm in favor of anything that gets more people involved in voting. So I'm open to any proposal that's going to get more people to come out and vote. I believe right now in District 14, we have about 90,000 registered voters. We have over 130,000 population, so I want to get more registered voters out. And second thing, Paul, I hate to do this to you, but I was, I'm going to do the same thing that Whitaker. I have one choice, top choice, and that's Ways and Means Committee. I testified before them many, many times about a variety of educational issues. It would be nice to complement our current delegation and have someone serving on Ways and Means. And I realize I'd be the most junior member of the body, so wherever I grow, I would be, you know, happy. Wherever I'm planted, I will be happy, and I will do the work as a District 14 team.
Yes, I support ranked choice voting too. There's a lot of benefits from ranked choice voting. And in terms of committee assignments, I would definitely consult with the existing D-14 team on. But my choices would be climate change. I think it's a very important issue for us. I would like to help out with climate change, and job creation and small business support. And the third choice would be appropriations of technology. I have a very strong technology background, I can add a lot of value. So those would be my choices, climate change, job creation, small business support, appropriations of technology. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I absolutely, excuse me, support voting reform. And as far as which committee, you actually stole my joke. I was going to say first choice, House Judiciary, second choice, House Judiciary, third choice, House Judiciary. And I share that because I have spent the better part of my life there, and I feel like that's my second home. If that is not a, if that's not a choice, I would be happy to serve where I, folks would think I would be best placed. But I would also love to be on Health and Government Operations and Appropriation. House Judiciary.
Yes, I absolutely 100% support ranked choice voting. It's no-brainer, many of the reasons people have said, the most of which is, there's a lot of people in our community who feel like their vote doesn't count, like it doesn't matter. And anything we can do to affirm people's faith in our democracy, we should do. In terms of committee assignments, I fully recognize that as the newest of the new delegates arriving in Annapolis, we won't have the luxury of really getting much of a choice. I think the issues in judiciary around juvenile justice are exciting to me. Environment and transportation is exciting to me, bringing the voice of a generation that has the most to lose from climate change. And in the long, long, long term, I would like to end up in Ways and Means on the Education Subcommittee because it is where my heart and experience is.
So as that process, I hope there's going to go to S B.
It's hard for you to answer. I'm curious, how and whether you think members should be guided by their own best judgment if it goes up against vocal opposition constituents? What extent do you think you should be directed by what you're hearing from constituents if it comes with your policy preference? How would you go about deciding or striking a balance? What will guide you?
Do you need me to repeat that question? All right, I will, I'll repeat it. So Ed said that many of the members really don't agree with the process that has us choosing tonight for the residents of D-14, but we have that responsibility, so this issue is very much on my mind. I hope it's not too esoteric. I'm curious how and whether you think members should be guided by their own best judgment if it goes against the vocal opposition from constituents? To what extent do you think you should be directed by what you're hearing from your constituents? If it conflicts with your policy preference, how would you go about deciding or striking a balance? What will guide you? Many questions there. So what we'll do is we'll begin in the middle with Paul Schwartz going left, and then once Matt is done, then we'll go from Doug Terry to Tom Smith.
It takes understanding what the issue is and why the, sorry.
Just a moment for the Zoom.
It takes understanding what the issue is and what the, both sides of the issue are. I would have to meet with those people to find out why their position is different than mine. If I'm convinced about my position, one example I'll give you is, this came up during the campaign, was the school safety officers. I'm for putting the school safety officers in the schools, and if they're not doing the job the way they're supposed to, then you remove that person and replace them. You don't do away with the program. And then I got pushed back because they said the students wanted them out. So before I make a final decision, even though I had a position going in, I would want to hear what their reasoning is for getting them out and seeing if you can come to some kind of compromise so that both sides understand what they're getting and how they can compromise to get the right. and how they can compromise to get the right thing. Because that's the goal, to do the right thing.
This is a very good question. In terms of how to go about filling vacancies, it's what the state law prescribes. It's up to you and to us to change that at some point. When it comes to how would I, as a state delegate, handle conflicts within the District 14 community? I like the way Franklin Delano Roosevelt used to handle things. He'd bring people from both sides of the equation together and let them discuss it civilly, calmly, figuring out where there's common grounds and build from there. I think it's very important to be listening to what the constituents want. And more importantly, to be able to reach out to people who ordinarily wouldn't be heard, maybe in a town hall or contributor or something like that, to find out what is their opinion on that? Because this affects every single resident on some of these issues. And I want to make sure that we listen to what they are saying, that we get people together and that we figure out common ground to resolve situations.
Yeah, so again, I agree with Paul. It's, this is the law. I mean, you're going through this process because that's what the law currently dictates. So you have a job to do, you have to make a decision. But if you feel there's a conflict in your decision with what your constituents are thinking, then if I were in your position, I would talk to them to find out, you know, hey, this is the situation, this is what I have in front of me to make a decision. So this is a criteria I'm going to use. So talk to a few people, get their opinion, and then vote based on your conscience. You know the facts, you're going to meet, you met all of us, they have not met you. So you represent their interests at this moment. So it's your decision at this time. So you exercise your best judgment. That's what I would do.
Once again, I would take a very collaborative approach to this. I would take, I would make sure that I sit down with all of the parties involved, listen to the constituents that may have a different opinion than I do, listen to those that may have the same opinion that I do. Have everyone sit down to the best that we can and really talk this through. I would work with the D14 team. And I also do some history on the issue, especially if I wasn't 100% familiar with it. So again, I would take an extremely collaborative approach to this. And if for some reason I decided against or I was not 100% with the constituents, I would sit down and kindly and calmly and compassionately explain why I thought differently than they did. And that's very important to me. Whenever I do my best, if I disagree with someone, I try to do it without being too disagreeable. It's not always the case, I realize, because we're humans. But I really do my, put my best foot forward and take that collaborative social work approach.
I think that even if esoteric is an excellent question because having served in elected office, that is one of the greatest tensions of representing people, when to follow the majority, when to follow the moral center. And it's an issue I ran into often on the school board, contentious issues like school integration. First, I think you have to make sure that you are actually hearing from the community and not a small subset of the community. It's why, as delegate, I want to make sure that we are hearing from everybody in our district, not just the folks who show up to town halls and meetings and are on your email listservs, but the folks who don't vote, can't vote, are counted out of our political process. Those are the folks who I want to make sure are included in the conversation. At the end of the day, follow the, not the will of those voters, which I believe at the end of the day does align with the moral imperative of the policy.
I guess I should sit down. I hope I understand this question properly. How to achieve compromise? One central factor is to establish your honesty and integrity in dealing with the other person or persons. To know that if they leave the room, that what you've said is true, that you will stick with it and you will not do deals behind their backs. So the other is to realize that other people are valuable, even though they disagree with you, and to look for what you can find that's high principle and what in their proposals that they need and see if there is a meeting ground. That's it for me.
This is the, this question belongs to the test of the personality of the candidate. So in legal science, there is a very one word, reasonableness. So the criteria of reasonableness should be applied in any situation we control, a delegate or a normal person. So we should always have the integrity and the honesty, having these virtues in mind. If you can, you know, how to reconcile, how to make the reasonableness work there, get the upper hand, that every problem can solve. To solve the problem, in other words, it's called conflict resolution. That conflict resolution, we have to show in our.
Mr. Fisher, thank you for that question. I guess out of the benefit of being second, almost last, I've been reflecting on it. And I want to give my personal story as a community leader. I served as co-chair of the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force where we implemented or actually recommended 87 recommendations to the county executive. And during that process, as a former prosecutor and defense attorney, to be frank, there were some recommendations that I wasn't always on board with. But in my role as co-chair, I was one of two voices for the group. A group that was very diverse with diverse opinions. So I did have a question to myself, said, do I have my voice out there or do I amplify the voices of those I'm set to serve in co-chair over? And I chose the latter because that was the role I was asked to do. And I would argue that is the role that all of you in the committee should be doing as well, amplify the voices of District 14 that they can't make it tonight. So thank you.
So as many have said, this is a very important question. I, at the end of the day, believe that we are to represent the people of our district and not necessarily our own personal whims or beliefs. But of course, there can always be these kinds of conflicts. I think it's very important, as Matthew brought up earlier, that we make sure that we are really hearing from a diverse range of voices in the community, especially those left behind, and not just narrow special interests that have the resource and the time to make their voices heard. So that means not waiting for constituents to come to you with concerns, but going out into those communities, especially the ones that we know are most underserved, to speak with them about their needs and how they feel on these issues. So we really have a truly broad sense of what the public opinion is in this very diverse district. And I think we need to bring, our role is to bring those people together, to hear all those different perspectives and mediate them and use our best judgment to find a common path forward for all of our districts.
Ed, thank you for that very important question. This is an esoteric for me. I've served in combat in Iraq and Afghanistan. I've served seven months in a Syrian refugee camp. And I served every single day in this district knocking on doors. And I saw the best types of leaders I've been able to serve alongside have a very simple model. We are paid to lead. However, we must listen and learn first before we can actively lead. And that's not just listening, learning once. And so the model I used on my campaign, I held 11 town halls over the 13 months I was part of the campaign. And what you do, you invite every single one to come to that door, Democrats, Republicans, independents, your neighbors, to come up and show up and share your actual frustrations. And you have somebody share the frustration. You may not agree, but you can dig into why they're frustrated. Because the long term, if you continue engagement, I will continue to do town halls every single month if elected as a state delegate. And because if we can work through one issue, then, and we may disagree, I promise that we can work on a second and third issue because that's the best way to have sustained engagement in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here and answering your questions and telling us a little bit about yourselves. This has been a great night. But I want to ask you a question about universal healthcare. Are you for or against?
We'll begin with Mr. Post.
Yes, I could sit back down. I believe we should move towards universal healthcare. It's a human right. And I think we can lead the country in establishing a model for that in Maryland. It won't be quick and it won't be easy. It'll take time, but I think we should do it in Maryland. In the meantime, we have a lot of work to do to make healthcare more accessible and affordable for residents of our district. That starts with empowering the Prescription Drug Forgiveness Board that has been implemented for a few years, making sure it has the resources and authority it needs to truly lower the cost of prescription drugs. Things like making it easier to get home and community-based services from Maryland Medicaid, reducing our paperwork burden that we place on families who need support the most. There's a lot that we need to do to lower the cost of healthcare in our district. It matters for everybody. I also think, just last thing, the Trans Health Equity Act, which will provide gender-affirming care to residents of Maryland without financial resources. We need to pass that immediately.
Again, the short answer to that is yes, but I'll say absolutely yes. Though it's not in our constitution, I absolutely believe healthcare is a right, just as affordable housing is, just as saving our environment is. And as somebody who has worked in reproductive health for as long as I have, I know what a challenge that is for so many people, whether they don't have access, whether they're not allowed to by law. I absolutely positively think healthcare should be in everybody's worlds, just like breathing.
Universal healthcare is a good goal, but I don't think we can flip a switch and turn over, do it overnight. It takes a long time. They have to be very, very careful of how much it's going to cost us. So Obamacare is working now. It's making good progress. I think we should expand on Obamacare and see how the prescription drug costs have been lowered. That's great. So take steps which are cost-effective. And then your end goal can be universal healthcare. But you can't flip a switch and make it work overnight, especially if you don't know the cost impact. The cost impact will be too much work across a cross board. And we have already got a very high deficit. We don't want to add to the deficit.
That's a great question, Mr. Stino. I thank you for asking. I think everyone is entitled to having good healthcare, quality healthcare. And if there's any way possible to make it universal healthcare, absolutely. I think it's very important also to make sure that we absolutely look at equity and inclusion when we're providing healthcare. Right now, there's a lot of people who can get healthcare because they have good jobs, because they know how to go about doing it. There should be a great equalizer to this that we don't currently have in place. And as someone who's experienced both my own son having health issues, my good friends having health issues, I know how vital it is to have good healthcare. And now I want to make sure that everyone in District 14, Montgomery County, and in the state can afford that same wonderful level of healthcare that they receive.
Absolutely, yes. Healthcare is not a, is a right, it's not a privilege. And people shouldn't have to make a choice of either having their health taken care of or at the expense of losing their home. My sister-in-law, God rest her soul, she just passed away. I know what it takes on a family when you get hit with an illness. So we're looking at Medicare for all, universal healthcare. I've mentioned before about the cap on insulin. Yeah, so if you're on Medicare, you now have the cap. What about if you're not on Medicare? Something like that, that $35 has to be for everybody who needs insulin. But until we get there, because politics is politics, at least have the public option, which Obama tried to get done. And I was hopeful that we'd get it done under Joe Biden. We still need that as a step towards universal healthcare. I'm for it. I don't care what it takes to get there.
Before Obamacare came around, there were 1 million bankruptcies per year across the United States. A lot of those were medically induced, meaning that people went bankrupt or got divorced so they could qualify for public assistance healthcare because they couldn't get what they need. One of the things I know we need, we need more doctors. The MCATs admission to medical school only accepts the top 1% of the MCAT score. We're bringing in foreign doctors because we're not educating enough. So this is, I accept this as a very serious problem. Everyone in America should have healthcare. The ultimate solution, I don't know, but we've got to work to work.
Thank you, Mr. Rebecca. You asked a question where I already started some working. 2008, 43rd December. One about Obama-Biden transition team asking the grassroots organizers of the people who are involved, they say, give you a recommendation. And we get this recommendation, he gets those recommendations, he's in my head. And the cornerstone of this recommendation was to have universal healthcare. So I would say, yes, yes, yes. And in addition to, I would say, I have a practical experience working in Washington Center for Aging Services as the Assistant Director of Finance. I saw what is Medicare, Medicaid, what we touch to the people. I still hear the crying of Mr. Rebecca, who lost his house and by putting his wife away.
Thank you for that question. I am a fan of universal healthcare. I remember studying and writing at Oxford, and I met this London resident who said, no, well, there's always a delay in getting a type of healthcare. But nevertheless, universal healthcare addresses health inequities. And we need to address those right away, particularly with the rising issues of mental health and individual disabilities like autism affecting District 14 residents. So I'm definitely looking forward to working with Delegate Pena Menek and other folks on the Health Committee about advancing towards that goal.
Healthcare is a human right, not a privilege for those that can afford it. Martin Luther King once said that of all the forms of inequality and injustice, injustice in healthcare is the most shocking in humanity. And I 100% agree with that sentiment. I think that Maryland should lead the effort in building a universal and affordable healthcare in our country. If we look to our neighbors to the north in Canada, they did not start at the federal level. They built it at provincial level. And we can do the same here in the United States. States like Maryland should be on the forefront of leading this. I've had to take care recently, a year or so ago, of my mother while she was dying of cancer. I know the difficulties that this places on people. When I was a young substitute teacher and didn't have health insurance, I went to the clinic you opened at the Muslim Community Center, the Montgomery Caris Clinic. So I know how important this issue is for so many people. Absolutely, we need universal healthcare. It's not a cost issue. Every study shows that universal healthcare delivers better results at half the cost.
Thank you so much for this really important question. First, it's personal to me. Talk about universal healthcare. I always call myself a pragmatic progressive. It's, we need to find ways and steps there. And very clearly, the folks we need to serve with the next step of healthcare are those most in need. We have a quarter million undocumented Americans in Maryland and the state that currently don't have access. We need to expand Medicaid to them. We finally did that for new mothers in this state. So that's the first and foremost, just focus on the most vulnerable. And second, as an congressional staffer, like Nathan just said, we have, we pay for worst healthcare. A third of our costs in healthcare are admin-related versus in Canada, it's 5%. There's only one reason for that. It's the amount of corporate PAC money that funds our campaigns. We need to have public finance campaigns for state delegates and state senators in the state. We have an option for the next two years to get those bills passed. We can be funded by patients and not by corporations and pharmaceutical companies. Thank you. Thank you.
Barbara, do you want to say a question?
Can you, I'm having a little problem with the cell, if you don't mind.
No, no. So Barbara's question is, COVID-19 impacted our way of life greatly, especially our children and youth. As students, especially special-needs students, continue to adjust academically and socially after virtual learning, what is your vision to bridge the academic and social gaps for students with disabilities and provide long-term supports for these students to thrive academically? We will begin with Doug Terry, and then go right, and then from Paul, we'll go left. With Doug Terry. Do you want to repeat it?
Question, one more time. How do you address COVID-19 to those students with COVID-19, so that it's identified a lot of issues?
So COVID-19 has had a tremendous impact on the way of life for many families, especially children and youth. So students, especially special-needs students, continue to adjust. What is your vision to bridge the academic and social gaps for students with disabilities and provide long-term support for these students to thrive academically? So what is your vision to bridge the gap for students that have special needs?
I have to say, this sounds like a question for educators and for schools, principals and teachers to address. It's a very serious problem. Students have obviously been deprived from not having classroom experience. One proposal that I've heard floated is to have summer sessions and additional schooling and provide... I think one approach that I would, not being an educator, but what I would consider would be assessing, doing assessments for the students who appear to be more deeply in trouble and finding opportunities for them to have more educational direct experience. In California recently, they had a summer session that was purely optional, and I think about 33% of the enrolled students signed up for that. So that's one thing I would certainly want to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Hafizah Rahman.
Yeah, whenever we talk about... Whenever we talk about COVID, I think everyone is still trembling for that one. 1.1 million people lost their lives due to COVID, and its impact on the seniors and even in the young people are trembling. I agree with the questioner that what sort of the incentive should be given to the disabilities, disabled people? I believe the school, a lot of reform is being done. In 235 pages, the legislature already passed that deal for math, for the... How to make the state of Maryland future better? And part of that also be addressed for the disabilities people from my layman.
Thank you for that question. Where I live in Colesville, I have a lot of conversations with other parents about this very issue of making sure that we are bridging the gap and really expediting the necessary resources to make sure that those who are dealing with special needs, autism, and other individual disabilities still can thrive along with everyone else's neurodiversity alike. So my thought process is, one, definitely I have conversations with the superintendent SCPS as well as other stakeholders to find out what funding is needed to bridge that gap. And that would involve going to Appropriations Committee, talking to the chairs or the subcommittees, even with Senator Zucker being Chair of the Capital Budget Committee, what can be done to provide more funding to bridge that gap? I think that's what's needed to supplement what's already being done at MCPS. So I thank you for that question.
This is a deeply important question. Prior to becoming a high school math teacher, I worked for many years as a special education par educator. I also provided autism therapy for the Autism Waiver Program, and I myself was an IEP student in Montgomery County Public Schools. This is an issue that is very close to my heart. And I think there are two very important things that we need to address right away. Number one is hiring and retaining more special education teachers. They are currently overworked and overloaded. I know special education teachers with 50 and 75 IEP students on their caseloads. They cannot do justice by their students and their families and under those circumstances. Secondly, we need to reach out to the community and make access and information about these programs more available. Access to our special education programs in the county should not require parents to spend thousands of dollars on advocates and lawyers in order to navigate the public school system. We need to make sure that these programs are open and accessible and that the community is well-informed with them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that great question. We have to do two things. First and foremost, we've lost 5,500 teachers in Maryland last year. The blueprint is focused on hiring 15,000 teachers, social workers, and psychologists and mental health providers for our schools over the next two years. That's a massive task, and it's not just about hiring and recruiting. It's also making sure we retain, because if our special education teachers don't have the support from social workers and behavioral, mental health providers, they're not going to be able to take care of the kids. And secondarily, we know that five-year-olds, 90% of their brains are finished by then. We need to really expand pre-K over the next 10 years, is what the blueprint is doing. We have to expedite that, especially for our kids in need and kids with disabilities. They should be some of the first families that get access to pre-K. Georgia did it in 1992. We can do it here in Maryland quicker than 10 years. Thank you.
COVID-19 exposed extensive inequities in our school system. We were unprepared, and you never know when the next time we're going to need virtual learning. Yes, we don't like it. We want to have face-to-face, in-person learning, but you never know when the need is. And so the key is to make it available to all our students. And that requires an investment and funding, especially for the special needs. Accessibility is the key. So whatever the next event is, we need to have that in our back pocket that if we need to go virtual, we have it for all of our students. We were even quite a chord with air circulation when the virus was spreading through the air ducts. So we really have to look hard and invest in updating our schools. And I'm for the blueprint as well. I understand that the blueprint tries to accomplish a lot of things, and I think we have to do it in phases, because the funding right now isn't there yet. But as far as COVID-19, invest so that all students have the same accessibility to virtual learning when needed.
Ms. He Bell, COVID has put a tremendous strain on our special education system here in Montgomery County. As a past president of the MCCPTA, I have kept in touch with many people, many of our educators, who have reached out to me and told me about the crisis that's going on in one of our special education schools in particular. And what we need to do is work with my friends on the Board of Education and Dr. Mutif McKnight, who I consider a good friend of mine, to find out what incentives and supports can we give to special education teachers as well as staff to encourage them to stay on the job, to encourage them, to help our students as much as possible. The second thing that we need to do is we need to do a much better job of encouraging students to go into special education as well as to guide them and provide them with entrepreneurship and internship opportunities in our special education schools. This is vitally important. Our kids at Carl Sandberg Learning Center deserve nothing less.
So the question was, how do you support the kids who have been impacted by COVID, who have disability? So what I would do first is to first find out how many kids have been impacted by disability, where are they located, make an assessment, and then try to set up extra coaching classes for them, optimize the coaching classes in the district so that it's cost-effective, and then hire more special education teachers and kind of special sessions for them till they catch up. You know, you need to make an assessment first of what's your problem? How many kids, is it 100 kids, is it 1,000 kids? Make that assessment first, assist the needs, and then hire teachers, special education teachers, and then give them the training. And you don't have to wait for summer. You can do it right now. And keep the sessions going until they catch up.
You're absolutely right. COVID-19 did expose a lot of inequities in our system, particularly for women and families in childcare, and of course, for individuals with students with disabilities. My vision to be able to help those individuals, we want to talk to the individuals that were impacted most to see what they would like to see changed, what worked, what didn't work, what would they like if money was no object? And also ask, if we only have a certain amount, what would your priorities be to make the biggest difference in their children's lives?
Pandemic has devastated our school system, and it's particularly true for our students who are already underserved, like special-needs students in MCTS. Some of this has to happen in the school system. Things like incentivizing the creation of career pathways so that we can grow our own teachers in Maryland. It's the only way we're going to solve the teacher shortage in the medium term. I also think that we should explore adding a Parents Advocate Corps to the State Department of Education. Like has been said, navigating the IEP process and the special needs process in our schools is absurdly complicated and complex, and parents should not have to spend thousands of dollars to have somebody on their side on helping them navigate that process. I also think we need to do better by our caretakers in the district, things like a tax break for caregivers who incur all sorts of expenses, as well as, like I said, making that process of getting home and community-based services through Maryland Medicaid easier and involve less paperwork.
We need to adjust some cameras. Ross, is that fine?
Yeah.
Is there a camera?
What do you need?
Does it adjust the tape? The next question, so we're going to... Ross, you can fix the cameras. The next question will be, I'm going to call on Andrew Saundrie for Lisa Smith.
For Lisa's question? Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you all so much for your time tonight. We all really appreciate it. This question comes from Lisa Smith, who's not with us here today in person. She says, "D14 is a majority-minority district. We know that even in Montgomery County, residents of color and immigrants experience discrimination. What in your experience and background makes you the best qualified to understand the needs of the District 14 community? Do you have examples?"
Mr. Smith?
I think Lisa felt a D14 member for this great question. First and foremost, I have a whole lot to learn in this space. And that learning began two years ago, October 2020, when two kids joined their household and became foster parents. Thankfully, our family became multicultural, multi-ethnic because of that. And we're very fortunate to be in Burtonsville. We're one and two folks, we're first and second-generation Americans, 60% are minority, and our family fits in. But I've seen firsthand racism still exists. You know, they get treated a lot differently when white dad shows up and has conversations, even with some of educators. And so I think having honest and earnest conversations, that it still exists. And we've had to have that conversation for 10-year-olds about how to engage properly with the law enforcement. So it's real. I need to listen and learn on this issue, but the past two years has been really enlightening. Thank you.
All right, thank you for this question. This is an incredibly diverse district. I've been in majority-minority environments pretty much my entire life. Having graduated from and worked for many years at Kennedy High School, this for me is the norm. My own family background, my great-grandparents were immigrants that came from Romania and Belarus, and I was often told the stories of their struggles arriving here in this country. My mom's side of the family were Protestant and Catholic. My dad's family is Jewish. And my wife comes from a black Muslim family from Philadelphia. So my own family, much like the district that I hope to represent, is very diverse, and we really kind of run the gambit. In college, I did exchange program in Ecuador. I learned to habla español, and I've done a lot of traveling throughout Latin America, Africa, Asia, and other places as well. I think it's really important to be able to communicate and relate with people of various different backgrounds, both culturally, racially, socio-economically, and in many different aspects as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. As a black immigrant that grew up in Montgomery County to a cab driver and a nursing nurse that worked at a nursing home, I definitely can relate to a lot of the immigrant population in District 14. You know, my parents worked crazy hours to make sure that Montgomery County was the place for my brother and I to thrive. And that is the voices of a lot of families in District 14 that moved up there for a better life in Burtonsville and Colesville, where I live, and other parts of the district. So to your question about the majority-minority, a lot of folks that I've talked to, through my experience in politics and being a community leader, are stories that I can relate to because I walked in their shoes. A lot of the stories that I've heard, I can relate to because I lived those stories and I am those stories. And those are stories I want to take with me when I go to Annapolis to represent the majority-minority District of District 14. Thank you.
At this moment, I remember one of the very famous quote of Professor Lasky, who said, "No tyranny more than majority tyranny." Fortunately, we are not going through that phase at the moment, and maybe for single future, we'll not see that one. But that is one of the things, that there will be no discrimination of white or black or blue or brown. This is one color we're in our states. We the Americans, we the US guys. So having told that one, this is a good opportunity to add this discussion that why I became a candidate, because in the state of Maryland, neither in the state delegate, nor in the senate level, there is any Muslim represented. So I believe that we not I, to present the, at least one minority segment, I became a candidate, and I want to some.
Thank you. According to the last census, 1/3 of our county is foreign-born. I wonder if we're making enough effort to fully accommodate the changes. We are a diverse society. We're going to be coming more diverse. Are we making opportunities for new residents of our county to participate more fully? And that's one thing that I would want to look at very closely, because we have welcomed many people to our shores. We're happy to have them here, happy to have people contributing. But let's make sure that we're making room and opportunities for them in our society and expanding that society to accommodate that diversity.
Hate crimes are crimes against all of us. In 2016, during the presidential campaign, those counties across the nation that held Trump rallies have seen an increase in hate crimes of 226%. Not 26%, 226. That's a real issue, and we have to work together as a Jew...
As a Jew, and as Jew, we were probably the original ones who were being hate, who elicited hate, way, going way back. My, as a matter of fact, my in-laws are Holocaust survivors, no longer with us. But it hit home, Spurle Hill hit home. But so did Father Emmanuel Church hit home. So we're all in this together when we're fighting hate and discrimination, and we have to work together. One of my suggestions was to change, if, if it was okay with the family of Martin Luther King, to change the Martin Luther King holiday from January to Election Day in his honor, because nobody fought harder for voting rights than Martin Luther King. Señora Smith, es muy importante que tengo el miembro del equipo 14 que habla la lengua de personas en District 14. I think it's very important to be able to meet people where they're at. I think it's very important to listen to what everyone has to say. And as someone who has been traveling around the county now for many years, talking to people where they're at, I like to put people at ease. I'm very proud to be a very active member of the NAACP in Montgomery County. I've been very, very happy to listen to what the concerns of the community are. I also was one of the first people invited to join the Black and Brown Coalition for Educational Excellence Equity by Diego Aruburu and by Byron Johns, my good friends. I listen to what the needs in the community are, and I do my best to address them, sometimes through legislation, sometimes by a phone call. But always listening to what their needs are and trying my best to address them.
Thank you. Mr. Rehman?
Yeah, so, so we, I have personally not faced any kind of extreme discrimination. It's been very soft and subtle at workplace at times. I can deal with that. But more important that I bought, we bought a house in the street. I thought it was, it was all white neighborhood. We talked to your father, but then Trump happened, and then people stopped talking to you. So, I mean, we just had to deal with that, you know? That's why I felt, as I said before, that Trump has caused a lot of divisions in our communities. We really have to work very hard to heal those divisions. Each one of us has to make an effort. But another issue is, we, we are also a military family. We have started a nonprofit for military families, Southeast Asian Military Family Support Network. And the reason we started that was because if you're a Hindu, if you're, if you're facing, if you're following the Hindu religion and you join the military, there's no Hindu chaplains, nobody, none whatsoever. So we, we found that issue, we started a nonprofit, and now we give specific support for all candidates who are of Hindu faith in the, in the military. That's how we've been able to support that.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Smith. I think it's very, a very important question, and one in which that I have been asking and working with really my entire career, having gone to social works school and worked with so many victims of crime from all many different walks of life. While I've never, while I've never had walked in those individual shoes, the one thing that I have learned is to learn the story, empathize with the story, understand the story, and truly help voice that story. And as a delegate representing District 14, I will absolutely certainly do that. I wouldn't say this is necessarily discrimination that I've experienced, but my first year in school, I went to school in Ithaca College, and it was, I had a roommate that was more rural part of, of New York. And I was the first, first, first Jewish person she had ever met. So I think that was as much of a shock to her, and it was certainly a shock to me having grown up in Montgomery County.
Yes, I mean, I, I think I should say from the offset that I have a ton to learn as a white guy with the privilege that that comes with. But the diversity of our district spans more identities than any one person is going to be able to embody. What our next delegate needs to do is have a track record of going out into our diverse community, listening to what people need, and working alongside them to make it happen. And that's my record on the school board. It's why I was elected by our student body, which it looks like demographically what the future of our county is going to look like. It's why I fought alongside Muslim students to make Edel Feeder a day off, being Jewish, never having to add experience, choosing between my faith and my education, because we take off for religious holidays, fighting alongside those recent immigrant students for more mental health supports, fighting along students to integrate our schools. And I'd also just add, in terms of diversity of perspective, average age of our legislature is 20 years older than the average age in Maryland. That's one perspective that I will work to add.
Your future colleague, Delegate Ann Kaiser, introduced a bill in the last legislative session. The gist of this bill is that Medicaid funding will be eligible to be used for gender-affirming healthcare for those people who need it. My question for all of you today is, when this bill comes up again, will you lobby your colleagues aggressively from day one to pass this bill and ensure Medicaid funding can be used for gender-affirming healthcare?
We'll begin with Mr. Court's, go left and then.
Absolutely. We're, we're all in this together.
Just a sec.
The short answer is yes. When I go on a roll.
Okay.
The short-term answer is yes, and the long-term answer is absolutely yes. We're all in this together, the Constitution, Declaration of Independence, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness applies to all of us. We should have these equal rights and equal coverage of everything that applies to one, applies to all. That includes the transgender community.
I respond.
Mr. Feldman, yes, absolutely, yes. Moreover, you asked, and I work to get my college students to agree to, absolutely. I think people are at denial sometimes about what reality is. And I think they want to deny that maybe they have people who need this kind of care in their family, and we need to work with them to make them realize this is a fundamental human right. Everyone deserves this help. Everyone does. And they need to come to terms with that. And I will work across the aisle to make sure that that happens. And if I get some resistance, I get some resistance. But it's important. And I think that sharing personal stories from my background about something like this may help as well to make people better understand that this really is about raising all shifts, making sure that we all are provided with the healthcare that we need.
Yes, I would definitely support this, support this bill. The principle is very important, you know? This is, I mean, you have to help the individual who needs this treatment. And they may be from different income levels, so they may not be able to afford the care. And if you look at it from a cost perspective, it's not going to be much, given the, everything else that we spend. So but in principle, this is really important, and it takes care of what, it takes care of minority obligations and principles. Yes, I would definitely support.
Absolutely. I think one of the first things that I would do is talk to Delegate Kaiser and see how I could best assist in those efforts. Before, I figured it was just started loving, because this is something that the D-14 team and Delegate Kaiser have been working on for quite a while now. And I wouldn't want to get the cart before the horse. And as a first-year delegate, definitely get their advice and take their lead. Follow the lead.
Yes, 100%. And we can't stop there to support the trans and queer people, particularly youth that we have in Maryland that are under attack right now. And so it starts, yes, with making sure that gender-affirming care is accessible to everybody, regardless of their socioeconomic status or their needs. We also have to do more in schools, making sure that the Inclusive Schools Act passed last session is implemented effectively and working. And I'm also interested in seeing what we can do to mandate that all gender and sexual identities are covered in a non-stigmatizing way in our state's health education. There's precedent for that. I worked with Delegate Ariana Kelly to pass a bill requiring affirmative consent to be taught in our health classes. And I'd be interested in doing the same to make sure that no trans or queer kids in our school system feel stigmatized by our current curriculum.
I have a feeling that this is a litmus test. If you answer, give the wrong answer. My answer is maybe. I'm not a legislator. I'm not in the legislature. I may never be in the legislature as far as that goes. The devil for government programs is in the details. If you don't know everything about how it's going to work and how it's going to be funded, I believe you can't say yes, you know, in a blank sort of way. I support the new governor's baby bond program, but I would not vote for it if it's not a good program that really benefits people and where the payments and the costs have been thought through. I'm in favor of anything that gets universal healthcare. This is an absolute necessity in our society. But I would read the bill carefully, and I would talk with people who've studied it longer than I have.
Thank you.
As always, I will always uphold the, the model of equal opportunity. And he has already indicated that in 19, in 1776, whenever Declaration of Independence was passed, the, the very famous statement, "Like liberty and pursuit of happiness." That pursuit of happiness sounds about here. And I, my answer would be yes.
So caution, I dictate how you identify oneself. So yes, I would support Ann Kaiser's legislation to have Medicaid cover gender-affirming care. Now, the problem that I'm hearing about, worrying about is frankly, there are some lawmakers, particularly some Black lawmakers, that might have issues with that. But as the only Black candidate on this panel, it's important to have my voice in Indianapolis to aid this work being done, the leadership of Ann Kaiser. Now, from my own personal experiences, I've seen a schoolmate actually go through gender-affirming care. And so, and this person was a person of color. So it is personal to me. It's not just a political statement. I've seen it happen. I, I love him now, now, and I loved her before as a friend. This is something that we have to make sure it's a human right. Thank you.
I would begin on day one, working to pass the Trans Health Equity Act. In that vein, I also think that we need to look at expanding access to the Affordable Care Act for undocumented immigrants, 40% of which in this county don't have access to healthcare. Because surely, some of those undocumented immigrants, as well as healthcare simply being a moral human right, some of those people will be trans as well. And if we have the Trans Health Equity Act, but we have 40% of our undocumented population, I'm sure they won't have access to that either. So in general, I am strongly in favor of equity in healthcare. So I would, I would push for that. And additionally, I would push for repealing our unconstitutional anti-sodommy laws, which are weaponized and used against trans and queer communities in various parts of the state.
Thank you for this question. And we all know that education is a human right. Medicaid is geared towards protecting our most vulnerable communities. I've seen the massive benefits myself with three of my kids on Medicaid. So expanding it is absolutely vital. Because at the end of the day, when a student is going to school, they do not feel safe in their own skin, they cannot learn. So that is a vital human basic right to be able to have this type of access to here, especially our most vulnerable communities, those in lower-income strata. Second part of this is protecting our kids, where there is, we have to focus on anti-discrimination policies at MCTS, as well as making sure we have active enforcement, as well as proactive education to the kids, students, and educators around these kids. So thank you so much for this question.
All right, we're down for our last two questions. Marco Rivera over. Marco? Marco?
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Go ahead, Marco.
Okay, thank you. I'll be very brief. I know it's getting late. My question is, as some of you may know, food insecurity is very close and dear to my heart in my line of work. So my question is, for the candidates, what would you do to improve SNAP and broadband access for the thousands of families that you represent in District 14?
Thank you. I will. So Marco has asked, what would you do to improve SNAP and broadband access for the thousands of families you will represent in District 14? So we will, how do we do this? We'll begin with Matt Post. So, hold on, Matt, the camera's coming. You're ready to go.
Now, food insecurity is a pressing problem in our community, especially after the pandemic. I think we need to do a few things. The first and most obvious is bring back universal meal program. It is absurd that right now paperwork is a barrier to kids getting meals in school. And we know that this particularly falls hard on our undocumented students whose families are rightfully concerned about filling out this form. Farm signups is the work that I do through my nonprofit. We've had some success at that, but we should just make this program universal. We also should extend SNAP to the undocumented families in our community who cannot currently access it. Undocumented folks in Maryland contributed $190 million in taxes last year, but are blocked from accessing programs like SNAP. There are six other states in our country, or, yes, in our country, that provide SNAP benefits to undocumented immigrants. We can do it in Maryland, and it's a disgrace that we have not done it already. I also think that we should provide resources for community services like OnlyHelp, like the Up County Hub, that are making the difference in our community on food insecurity.
First of all, thank you so much, Marco, for all the work that you're doing in Up County around food insecurity and the food hubs. You've been doing a tremendous job on that. And that's something I would certainly support on the, on the state level. Second, I would really take a look at access. What are the current barriers around accessing SNAP and broadband access? And work towards not only helping in securing assistance for more nonprofits, such as what we currently do in Only, through OnlyHelp and through the Only Civic Fund, but also work through private partnerships with broadband access. Take a look at what some of our communications companies are currently doing, or could be doing more to be able to reach people who need the assistance.
Yes. Definitely, you need to increase the SNAP program, make development to a larger audience. But on top of that, to tackle the problem of food insecurity, you also need to have a community effort. I know that during COVID-19 epidemic, I was personally involved in a lot of grocery drives. There's a lot of community aid organizations in the D-14 area which had a lot of grocery drives, where people would come and pick up groceries. And that helped a lot of people. And there are a lot of people willing to share what they have. So this is a very good way to get people involved in the community. And it helps with the food insecurity. It's not, shouldn't, it can, yes, the government can include the SNAP program, but you can also do a lot of community effort to share, to share this effort to decrease food insecurity.
Thank you and your family, Ms. Rivera, over, for everything you've been doing in the Up County Hub throughout the pandemic. There's a lot more that we could do. As someone who's been delivering food through the Guru Gob and the Saint Foundation, it's home for the past year, I could tell you that the, the need is great, and we have to step up to the plate more to make sure that our neighbors are provided for. We have to find funds to make available for food, for SNAP program. We also need to really consider what we can do for universe, for school lunches. There's a stigma attached to our farms program, and we really need to address that. I think if we had universal lunches for everyone, that would be a step in the right direction to achieving that goal. Also, regarding broadband, Councilmember Hans Reimer, who's now gone, he was very instrumental in getting 5G across the county. I want to make sure that we work with our partners at the county council level, at the state level, and all. at the state level and also at the federal level to provide services for people at a very low threshold of paperwork to access these services at home.
As far as food insecurity, farm to, to food bank, farm to schools, this helps our schools, it helps our, our farmers. I interviewed Tom Farquhar. I don't know if you're familiar with him. He's a farmer. He says it can't be done economically. And that means that we get fresh food to these people instead of just the processed food. And as far as broadband, I believe it's covered in the infrastructure bill that we should have the funding for universal broadband. So clearly I'm for that. And if we don't have the funding, we need to get the funding. But I believe a lot of it is covered in the infrastructure bill from the federal government. But as far as the food goes, farm to food bank is the key. And that helps our farmers, it helps our people who need the food and it gives them fresh food and it can be done economically.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Expanding a little bit on some of the points that have been made over here. School security and shootings that have happened around the nation are very concerning. In the ten years since Sandy Hook, my recollection is from reports of events fifty-four in-school shootings. We need to get out in front of this issue. We're behind, we're reactive. We need to find ways to encounter the people who might be dangerous on an earlier basis and to respond accordingly. And we need measured, careful security measures. On the issue of school lunches, there is an experiment underway in some districts, some areas of the country, free lunches for everyone. And they have found that everyone, every student seems to benefit from that rather than just the giveaway program. On the broadband issue, there are billions of dollars in Biden's program for universal broadband. Let's make sure we're accessing it, we'll make sure it's coming here instead of elsewhere.
We, we are facing issues after issues. But as I indicated in my interaction, we in M C C created a little model. We had in M C C Food Bank, members are encouraged to donate their food, standard food over there. I think what I was indicating at the same time, I have gone through the appropriation, at least vegetarian segments, state only provide twenty-two percent of District fourteen total capital budget. So that, so, and on the other hand, states are encouraged, this is the first time, not first time, we have thirty-nine, forty-nine and a half, our president and governor of the same Democratic Party. So more federal funding should be diverted to Maryland in this, in this sort of programs. And we should all want to get out for that.
Thank you for your, your question. So where I live in Colville, there's a, a food, a food bank line on Randolph Road that after two, for two years, two years, the lines are still as long. So this is a very, very serious issue. In terms of expanding SNAP and broadband, we have to look to how things are done in Annapolis. Let's talk to appropriations committee at the House level. Let's see what funding can be done to increase the, the access to SNAP and increase broadband access. And this is something that we have to do to make sure that everyone is getting the nutrition that they need and the resources they need, then let's do it. I also believe in actually considering public-private partnerships. I've also mentioned through various conversations with other people that I want to expand our, our farm to school program. It's an initiative that started in two thousand eight with the leadership of Jamie Raskin and the late Sheila Hickson. But I want to expand that to work with free, free lunches and free healthy foods for, for kids. And that way the kids aren't going without food and they're going with food that is healthy. Thank you.
My wife and I drive past the same line of people waiting at the food bank on Randolph Road almost every weekend. It is still a very acute issue in our community. And with rising food costs, it's only seeming to get worse. We desperately need to invest in expanding eligibility for the SNAP program, raising those income cutoffs and also providing larger benefits to families because the amounts simply don't cover the cost of food anymore. We need universal meal programs, both breakfast and lunch in our schools, that do bring in healthy food. And let's go back to actually cooking and preparing real, live, healthy food in our schools that have actually amazing kitchens that we underutilize. On the topic of broadband, we absolutely need to look at federal and also implementing state programs to make broadband access more affordable. But we also have to look at regulating the broadband industry. It's currently monopolized basically by two companies. They need to be forced to sell those lines to other companies that can compete the way the, the big four cell phone providers are forced to sell out their networks. We need competition in that marketplace. Oftentimes you have maybe one, two of your lucky choices for broadband and it's simply not enough.
Thank you, Marco, for all the wonderful work that Up County Hub does to serve families.
Shut up!
In the day though, you know, SNAP benefits is putting a Band-Aid onto the real issue. Is one, six kids in Maryland live below the poverty line? If you're in poverty, you're food insecure. Why don't we actually make a living wage? Governor Moore, Governor Westmore elect has made a commitment to expedite minimum wage increase of fifteen dollars before twenty twenty-five. Let's make that a reality first and foremost. Let's do it this year. Let's do it next year. And then also let's pass a bill to actually make minimum wage tax inflation. So it's not just a first fight. So if families are food insecure, they're not making a living wage, let's fix that first and foremost because that benefits our families in the long run. That money comes back to their economy. Thank you so much.
All right. Last question for the evening. We'll do closing statements and then go into votes. And I'll explain the process for that. So I want to yield to my colleague, Mark Anthony Robles.
Thank you, manager. I want to commend all of you for sticking this process out. I know it's been, my pleasure is none. So my question is, Black and Brown communities have been bearing the brunt of high rental increases in this county and across the state. Would you support a statewide bill to, to support rent stabilization and support equality for renters' rights across the board?
So. All right. Let's just, we'll start with Tom and then we'll just go down.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience. We apologize for the issue that, and the, and the hacking that happened on the Zoom account. Just for everyone's knowledge, we have basically shut the Zoom down because it was multiple accounts, not one. And with over a hundred and fifty participants, that's a very tricky situation to calibrate and it's extremely inappropriate. And the N C D C C is extremely disappointed by the conduct of those individuals. And, and when we move forward in the interest of the public knowing what's happening, we will be recording the remainder of the event similar to how the Zoom was and it will be available on our website after this meeting, along with everything else. So we are on the tail end, I hope. So. I hope. So we, the member, the candidates were answering Mr. Robles's question. I don't remember who was in the middle.
When you say the Zoom is shut down, is it just that, like, video and the microphone are shut down for the attendees? Or is it not, it is not being livestreamed?
It is not being livestreamed. It will be recorded and made public. There were too many accounts and we could not control the situation. If we have to, we will do that. I mean, we, we, I mean, we will look at that as soon as we're done with this meeting. We treat this extremely seriously. It was an absolutely unacceptable candidate. And we just have to be very careful about this.
I would request, you know, for future situations that we have a method of live streaming that doesn't, that, that, like, such as over YouTube or Facebook.
We, we can take that offline or executive session at the next meeting and have that conversation. Okay? But I do appreciate your, your, your comment. So we'll go back to Tom. My apologies for cutting you off. Yeah, we, we need to refocus. So please, Mr. Robles, can you please?
Sure. Black and Brown communities have been bearing the brunt of high rental increases over the past few years in this county and across the state. Would you guys support rent stabilization bill? And would you also support, defend renters' rights across the board?
Mark, thank you for this important question. Across the board, yes. So first and foremost, got taught in the military, as you know, Mark, you got a triage and we have to eat the most amount of help to the most amount of people right now. Seven hundred fifty million dollars for the agency of health assistance in the state. Get eighty thousand people in their homes during the pandemic. If we do not act, we'll put another hundred and seventy-five million this fiscal year of seventeen, sorry, twelve thousand Maryland families to be evicted. So we need to really focus on passing that this fiscal year. And then secondary, we have to address root causes. Why are developers not creating the affordable housing units that we need and the percentage that we need? Because the amount of money they can dump into state races. We've seen it here at the county level, public finance campaigns. Let's again do that at the state level. Thank you so much.
Affordable housing is absolutely my number one issue. It is the greatest burden and the greatest cost.
One second, one second. Members can't hear on the, on the Polycom. So. Can you hear us?
Could you please identify who's speaking and then bring, either have him talking closer or louder?
The mic's on the table there. Put that mic, pull the mic out.
Just a moment, guys. Just re-swivel the camera and make them speak in it.
We've got a camera over there as well. Actually, what's coming?
That's the mic there, right? So does this look good?
Can you guys hear now?
Are you guys able to hear me?
It's not bad. It's better.
Yeah, it's better.
All right, affordable housing is absolutely my number one issue. It is the biggest bill and the biggest cost for most families and it's been increasing rapidly. Quite honestly, for many decades, far faster than wages. We need to continue to provide rental assistance to families in the district and in the state as a whole. I a hundred percent support rent stabilization. I've been working with groups in the county to get that at a county level. And I would definitely want to work on getting that at a state level as well. I think we also need to look at passing the bill that Governor Hogan vetoed last session, which would hold illegal landlords accountable and not allow them to utilize our court system if they are renting illegally. I also would want to work to pass a version of Von Stewart's Social Housing Bill. I think we need to get back to a model where we have the state directly investing in public housing and in affordable housing, especially when this private market is scaling back. And we also need to make sure that we have more affordable housing built and that we reduce zoning regulations and other regulations that prevent the construction of affordable housing.
Thank you.
I have a request of the chair. Sorry to interrupt. This gentleman right here, the third one from the end, approached me and told me he would not vote for me. I suggest that he not be allowed to participate further. It was rude. He walked away from me. He came up basically to me just to make me angry, which he succeeded in doing. But he has indicated.
Thank you, sir.
He has indicated publicly what his preference is and I ask that he be excused from this panel.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize for the interruption, but I found it necessary. I ask that he be.
We are, we are going to finish with the questions, the Q and A session. Ms. Mariko Noor? Absolutely.
Withdraw my name, please. Take my name out of the balloting. If you can't run this properly, it doesn't mean to be run at all. This is wrong from the beginning. I came here tonight.
All right, Mr. No, please, no. Mr. Mr. Nor.
I'm withdrawing my candidacy and I'm leaving, okay?
That's fine. Mr. Terry, please, you have had, you have had more than thirty seconds.
This is undemocratic.
Mr. Terry, you are out of order.
It's a private club.
Mr. Terry, you are out of order.
I'm out of here. You're free.
Thank you.
They do anything you want. This guy.
Mr. Terry, you are out of order, sir. Please remove yourself from this room.
Thank you very much and congratulations on you people for staying. You're wonderful. It's amazing that you've been able to put up with all this.
So in response to your question about Black and Brown communities and renters' rights, I've had experience as a renter and a landlord. So I have a balanced view of rent stabilization. I think that we have to promote it, but with the mind of how does it, how does it hurt the landlord and what to do to remedy that? Because in the day, we were just talking about affordable housing that is going to benefit the communities. Now, in addition to what we talked about with affordable housing, I want to talk about safe affordable housing. Because see, we can have rent stabilization, we can promote renters' rights, but if renters are not in habitable conditions, we're wasting our time talking about renters' rights. And we need to improve state requirements in terms of making buildings safer. If a landlord is going to rent out, let's increase the requirements on how to, how to keep these buildings safe or how to keep the home safe, which would require maybe requiring locks on certain doors. And these are things that are not required by the state. County enforces these needs, but not state requirements. So I am interested in kind of exploring that as well, if I get a chance to go to Annapolis. And that would help with the mass renters' rights.
Thank you very much, Ms. Noor. Mr. Hafiz Rahman? You're fine.
As a matter of fact, affordability of the housing is a fundamental right of, of every human being, be it in the United States or any country anywhere in the world. I remember during this pandemic time, Biden administration was able to disburse five trillion dollars for the stimulus check. And part of that is dedicated for the stabilization of housing, of rental, rent stabilization. Apart from that, there is a federal agency to provide necessary assistance to rent stabilization. If that is not enough, as my understanding is, not enough for the state of Maryland. And in foreign district, we have five point one percent is living under poverty line. So perhaps that is needed for them. And I do support any legislation being placed in a state level or county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schwartz? You're good.
I can answer your question. Yes, I'm for rent stabilization, renters' rights. No one should be forced out of their apartment because of skyrocketing rents or unscrupulous landlords. As far as affordable housing goes, my position has always been that it has to be built at a transportation hub. And the reason for that is you don't want to create a new problem by addressing an old problem. So by having it at transportation hubs, that cuts down on the needs for driving, things like that. And so if we're going to do affordable housing, that's where it really needs to be because you don't want it in places where it's going to create more congestion.
Thank you. Mr. Geller?
Would it be okay if I stood here so I can adjust?
It was just, it was just, so you're right there. You're good. I think, let us know if you can hear Paul Geller, okay?
Thank you. Just want to make sure my back's not tingly. Thank you. Mr. Robles, this is a great question. I definitely do support efforts for rent stabilization. I grew up in a place called South Bridge Towers in downtown Manhattan. And it was the only place that my parents could afford in New York City. And I was grateful for that. And I think we should. And I was grateful for that, and I think we should have more of those opportunities here in the state of Maryland. As far as renters' rights are concerned, absolutely. I was the first non-attorney ever to serve on the board of an organization called the D C Law Students in Court Program. Ms. Marika North was actually an attorney in that program. And it was a fantastic program that had, was a consortium of five law schools in D C, where wonderful law students like her, like my wife, would volunteer to advocate for students in landlord tenure. That was ninety percent of our cases, and I heard horrific things there. And I want to make sure that we advocate and we have renters' rights for everyone so that people can live in a nice, affordable place and enjoy their American dream. That's what it's all about.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, I would definitely support uh, renters' rights and rent stabilization. I would, I would only request that it's fair to the land, to the landlords and the renters. I mean, they should not pay any discrimination on either side. Make sure that the program is equitable and fair to both parties. Because even the landlord should not be uh, impacted. The, the long-term solution is affordable middle, middle-class affordable housing. And affordable housing should be a public-private partnership. Government should not be investing all their funds into building out housing. It should be a, we should be able to incentivize the private enterprise to work with the government and build out middle-class affordable housing. Uh, and make sure that there's no price gouging and uh, during the rental, during the rentals. Thank you.
Uh, as a, as a renter once long ago who rented in Montgomery County, especially in the White Oak area, um, I needed as much help as I possibly could, could, especially as an upcoming professional. Um, it was very hard to be able to find an apartment that I could afford, um, and that my entire salary didn't go to, to be able to be able to put a roof over my head. Um, fast forward, um, I saved every penny that I had. I learned um, how to, later on, um, learned about the mortgage industry, learned how to buy a house. When I finally was able to buy what was then an affordable house, um, my car broke down. So then I became house poor. And so I felt like I kept getting stuck in the cycle over and over and over again. Um, I absolutely believe that we need to support individuals that not only want to rent, but to purchase homes, and that's where affordable housing comes in. And on the state level, I believe both Senator Zucker and Delegate Queen introduced a affordable housing bill uh, last year that would do an assessment of the current state buildings to see if those might be something that we could convert to affordable housing. And that's why it's something important to think differently about how we provide housing to our community, especially individuals in District fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Post.
Y- yes, uh, the cost of keeping a roof over your head in Montgomery County, um, much less buying one, is out of control. And just as you said, this is an issue that disproportionately affects people of color and immigrants in our community. Um, and as a young person, um, I, I talk to young people all the time who know that when they graduate, um, they will not be able to return here because of the insane cost of rent and housing prices. Um, so yes, I support rent stabilization at a local level. I'm interested in seeing what we can do as a state to support jurisdictions who do that. I do think we need to pass way more protections for renters, uh, things like Janelle Wilkins's Just Cause Eviction Bill, um, which would prevent landlords from displacing tenants at the last second. Um, I also think in the long term, we need to build way more affordable housing uh, in this county and this district and this state. Uh, that includes um, uh, building uh, housing specifically for teachers and essential workers. Um, and uh, bringing back, when we bring back state economic development money, uh, it comes with riders requiring housing.
So we are going to move into closing statements. Um, every candidate will be allocated one minute. And similar to the Q and A round, the time will be kept in the same manner, which will be, um, Michael will hold up a sign fifteen seconds and then time. We will begin with Paul Schwartz in the middle, go right, and then Matthew Post to Mr. Geller.
I have dedicated my entire adult life to public service and seek the opportunity to continue that service as a delegate in Annapolis. The combination of experience built up over a long, long, long period of time includes, as I mentioned before, my federal, uh, as a federal official, as an advocate at the state level, but also as a co, a local columnist reporter for the Montgomery County Sentinel, where I did write about, covered the White House and Congress, but I also wrote about local and state issues like gun safety, like voting rights, like Court Watch Montgomery, like Scotland Storm. I was a member of the Montgomery County Public Election Fund Committee and member of Mark Schreiber's Committee on Children and Disasters, and my work with Safe Plans, as I mentioned before, assessing school safety and security across the nation. And as a candidate for county council, where I became involved with many of the issues that still impact the residents of District fourteen now. I've been a resident of Brookville for twenty-five years, and uh, I, all I ask is that all these should be factored in when you make your choice for who you want to represent District fourteen in Annapolis. Thank you.
Mr. Rahman?
Thank you all again for this wonderful opportunity. I was trying to bring everybody's attention that in District fourteen, per capita income is fifty-one thousand plus compared to statewide sixty-two thousand plus. That nationwide is seventy thousand plus. I bring you attention that in District fourteen, as a, as a candidate, whoever you winning today, it is our responsibility to bring at least this eighteen percent difference removed from our District fourteen. Without that, from my experience in the legislative branch of the government and coordination of the legislative branch, I salute fellow citizens. And at the, in conclusion, I'd like to share with you one of our Quranic verse, "Wala'uh ah, thuratu, khairu laka, mina'ulu la." This optimism that your future is better than your beginning. Thank you.
Thank you again. My name is Bernice Marika North, and stronger, healthier, and safer communities is the heart of why I am applying for this vacancy on the House of Delegates and to work along with the amazingly strong delegation. Now, District fourteen's demographics is changing, as, as I mentioned earlier tonight, as goes with the county. And our delegation is strong, but I strongly believe that with my addition to the delegation, I would bring a new perspective rooted in my professional lived and community experiences. Now, tonight you've had a chance to hear from all ten of us on various topics, uh, as well as our opening statements, but I actually to also reflect on the letters that were submitted on behalf and the contacts made on behalf. Because indicative of the strong relations, I am going to build an Annapolis to bring the necessary resources for District fourteen. So, and thank you for your time. I know it's been a long night, um, but I do ask for your votes, and thank you very much.
Mr. Feinberg?
We live in a great district and a great state with many things to be proud of. But now is not the time to rest on our laurels. Great troubles face many of the families in our community that urgently need to be addressed. Yet, I remain hopeful. For the first time in many years, we have the opportunity to truly take the lead on the issues facing so many of us. The pandemic has opened our eyes and laid bare the inequities of our society, and we can no longer ignore them. At the same time, we enter this legislative session with both strong Democratic majorities and a new Democratic governor committed to uplifting the people of our state. Since the days that my grandparents, the children of East European immigrants, bought their first home in Forest Glen and opened their first restaurant here, ours has been a welcoming community, welcoming to the immigrant just arrived to our shores and to the migrants escaping the Old South, to the old and to the young, the rich and the poor. And that is a legacy that we can and must continue for today's generations and those to come after us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you so much for this opportunity tonight. I'm truly blessed to have been raised by a wonderful and resilient single mom Gala, who's here tonight with me. As a kid, we first lived in Florida, then Tennessee, and Alaska, and then back to Tennessee. My mom busted her butt to give me a chance to go to the Air Force Academy, which changed my life. I spent the next decade and a half living across the world and across the U S, from Middle East to Africa. And then I got the chance to move here with my family. This district, my wife and I got married in, we became parents here, and recently my mom has joined us here in Burtonsville. In essence, this community has given us a place to truly belong. I'd be humbled as a delegate to make sure each and every person and family in D fourteen is provided this same chance to belong and thrive. Thank you, M C D C members, for the long haul tonight. Thank you, my D fourteen neighbors, for coming out tonight to show your support, and thank you to the D fourteen delegation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Post?
First, I want to thank all of you on this committee for conducting a fair and serious process. Uh, I'm grateful for all the work you put in for our party. One of my earliest memories was knocking doors with my family, collecting petitions to build a speed bump on our street. That simple idea that bringing people together can change things has driven my work as a school board member, gun safety advocate, and nonprofit leader here. Change always comes from the bottom on up. It's why I'm so proud to have the most letters of support from D fourteen voters, from friends and community members who know my work. It's why, as delegate, I'll work my tail off to bring more of our community into our democracy. And it's why I'm in this race, to use my experience from elected office to fight alongside my community for the progressive change we need. And I'm asking for your vote today in this moment for Maryland, because I believe our best shot to make that change here is now. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Ms. Inklesstein?
Thank you to my fellow candidates. Thank you to all of you for working so hard up until this point, and of course, making the hard decision this evening. I'm a community advocate and a strong working community advocate that has dedicated my life to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and enhancing reproductive rights for women and families locally in Montgomery County. I pledge to each and every one of you tonight, that same passion that I have used, the same anger that I've used, the same love that I've used over the last twenty-five years, will absolutely bring to the individuals in District fourteen. Your support means, your support tonight not only means something to me, but it means certainly something to all of the individuals in District fourteen. It means something to families, it means something to children, and it also means moving Maryland forward. I ask that I, you vote for me tonight, and I certainly hope that I've earned the right for your vote and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rajendran.
Well, here we are. Out of the room.
You're not in the camera view.
Oh. Sorry. Sorry.
Thank you. No, no, we're fine.
Can I get my start again? Okay, thank you. Well, here we are. Thank you all so much for being here, for being patient. It's been a pleasure, whatever may be the outcome.
Mr. Rajendran, can you please speak?
I'm so glad I came here today. Thank you all so much. Now, question to all of you, what are you looking for? You're looking for a candidate for, who represents a diverse population and who can get stuff done. So I'm your candidate. I have a proven record of getting stuff done. I, I have a track record of getting stuff done. I fight, I have fought for my projects tooth and nail. I've made hundreds of presentations, government, state, local, to present my viewpoint, to defend my project, to defend my budgets. That's what you need, a guy who's done that over and over again and been successful. I will also work as a team, with a D fourteen team. I'm a team player. I may not have done legislative work, but I'm a very fast learner, and that's what you need. You need people who can dive into subjects, learn fast, present, and solve your problems. I'm a fast learner, I get stuff done, I fight for your projects, and I want your vote.
Ms. Geller?
At the age of eight, my parents divorced. And when I would go to school, I would see kids whose parents would volunteer in the classroom get preferential treatment. And I always vowed to myself, if I ever had an opportunity to make a difference in people's lives and level the playing field, I would do that. I was very fortunate to be active and engaged in P T A in this county, and each and every opportunity that I had to level the playing field, I did. Usually that involves Herculean lifts of getting money into our schools, something I was very successful at doing. I want this job and I ask for your vote. I want to go to Annapolis. I want to bring home some funds that I believe are long overdue to us with casino gaming revenue. I want to be a voice for the voiceless in our community. I want to be there to level the playing field for each and every person, each and every day that I serve. It would be an honor and a privilege to serve on the District fourteen team. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, closing remarks have now closed, and we will begin, um, we will enter the, the voting round. Um, just for a little bit of instruction for everyone, Ross Mara has, I believe, passed out all of the ballots. And. And so what is, in the first round, um, all ten, all nine candidates will be on the ballot. And so what happens after the first round is those that have zero or no votes will be eliminated, and we will move to round two. Um, the Secretary Theresa Womar, Worman and Vice Chair will be tabulating the votes, and um, once they're logged in, they will be reading them out loud. All right, so. Yes. And so after that, um, as it is on this ballot, you have round two, round three, round four. So the top, well, not the, the vote getters, in, after round one, will proceed to round two. And in round two, the lowest vote getter will be eliminated, and we will proceed to round three. Note that if we come down to three candidates, the bottom two, if they are tied, we will move into ranked choice voting. And in that, there will be a weighted average, and out of those three candidates, you will rank who you want in first, your first choice, your second choice, and then your third choice. So, does anyone have any questions? Yes, the only thing you have to do is check off the name. And you only vote for one person.
We bring them over to the box.
No, Ross will be collecting them. For all those on, on the conference system, have you all received your ballots? There's another one. Okay, thank you. If you have any issues, let us know. Okay, fantastic. No, no, we're only right around the line. Second round. Do we have all the al-malays?
Barbara said she has a cotton.
Barbara? Barbara?
And I was like, I was laughing. And I was like, I was laughing. And I was like, oh my God.
And if you need to go, okay? You can hear us? Thank you. Can you hear me better? I'm better? Yeah, we got you. All right, I'll watch you.
Guys, we're just about to start the vote tally, okay? On the polygon. Thanks. If you can't hear us, let us know.
Sounds good.
Okay. Matt Post got eight votes. Jody Finkelstein got six votes. Bernice Miraco-North got nine votes. And Tom Smith got one vote. And I'll read out the individual votes. Andrew Sondry voted for Matt Post. Arthur Edmonds voted for Jody Finkelstein. Barbara Abel voted for Bernice Miraco-North. Ed Fishman voted for Matt Post. Isa Haddad voted for Bernice. Jason Spiegel voted for Tom Smith. Jennifer Guzman-Hosi voted for Jody Finkelstein. Jim Michaels voted for Jody Finkelstein. Lysa Smith voted for Bernice Miraco-North. Mark Robles, Bernice Miraco-North. Marjorie Goldman voted for Jody Finkelstein. Marco Rivera-Elvin voted for Matt Post. Michael Tardif voted for Matt Post. Michelle Whitaker voted for Bernice Miraco-North. Nathan Feldman voted for Bernice Miraco-North. Pamela Luckett voted for Bernice Miraco-North. Pete Whistler voted for Matt Post. Rebecca Castillo voted for Matt Post. Saman Ahmed voted for Jody Finkelstein. Sarah Brand-Widda voted for Bernice Miraco-North. Sebastian Johnson voted for Matt Post. Seth Bynes voted for Bernice Miraco-North. Shruti Bhakmakar voted for Jody Finkelstein. And Teresa Warman voted for Matt Post.
All right, thank you. Everyone should have their round two... I'm sorry, they should have their original ballots back. The... Yeah. Who? Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, I'm getting them. So, in round two... Do we have that whiteboard? Let us know if you guys need us to write it down, but the individuals that have made it to round two are Matt Post, Jody Finkelstein, Bernice Miraco-North, and Tom Smith. So if it's not those four candidates, please just cross out those names and then vote amongst those four.
I believe the lowest vote getter of the zeros dropped out and the lowest vote getter dropped out. Tom dropped.
Yes, Tom got one vote.
Yeah, but it was the lowest.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the lowest. So it's the zero vote getter and the lowest vote getter that get dropped in round one.
So it's three.
So at least three candidates. It's Matt Post, Bernice Miraco-North, and Jody Finkelstein. I apologize for the error, it's been a long night. So, please...
Could you announce the totals again?
Sure. Matt Post, eight. Jody Finkelstein, six. Bernice Miraco-North, nine. Tom Smith, one. The remaining candidates, Paul Geller, Paul Schwartz, Nathan Feinberg, Hafiza Rahman, Raj Rajindran, all got zero votes. So those five names and Tom Smith will not be proceeding to the second round. There's only three names, Matt, Jody, and Bernice. So please vote for one candidate amongst the three that I have just mentioned.
And we use the same online ballot?
No. I'm sending you anyone. She's sending you anyone. So just be on standby for a minute.
Okay, okay. I just...
I almost got it.
Yeah, but we had too much...
No, I told her.
Okay. Yeah.
I told many times.
Okay, nice. I'm just giving the demo votes. Because I feel the...
I mean, I gave them the option. At the moment, it's the worst thing.
Is everybody all right?
Is there another call?
Everybody on the call feeling okay?
We are doing, thank you.
Good, good. We're just checking to make sure we have our votes logged. Barbara, we're still waiting on your vote. Thanks. I'll pay attention in a minute, Marjorie.
Come on, did you give my vote?
I did.
Thank you.
I thought you were talking to me, right?
You guys are so funny. You all got the jokes.
What is it?
You all got the jokes and everything. We're almost done, we're almost done, guys. All right. So I'm going to turn this over to the secretary to read out the tally. I'm not going to give the entire story away, but I will say that we are not going to be proceeding to the next round. We do have a winner of the majority of the votes cast this evening. So Theresa, please begin.
All right, so in the second round, Matt Post got four votes. Jody Finkelstein got six votes. And Bernice Miraco-North got fourteen votes.
Oh, my goodness! Let's give Bernice a moment, but can we finish reading the votes and finish out the meeting, please? Thank you. All right, guys, let's finish out the evening here on a positive note. Thank you so much for everyone's patience.
All right, so I'll read out the individual votes. Andrew Sondry voted for Bernice. Arthur Edmonds voted for Bernice. Barbara Abel voted for Jody. Ed Fishman voted for Matt. Isa Haddad voted for Bernice. Jason Spiegel voted for Bernice. Jennifer Guzman-Hosi voted for Jody. Jim Michaels voted for Jody. Lysa Smith voted for Bernice. Mark Anthony Robles voted for Bernice. Marjorie Goldman voted for Jody. Marco Rivera-Elvin voted for Matt. Michael Tardif voted for Matt. Michelle Whitaker voted for Bernice. Nathan Feldman voted for Bernice. Pam Luckett voted for Bernice. Pete Whistler voted for Bernice. Rebecca Castillo voted for Matt. Saman voted for Jody. Sarah Brand-Widda voted for Bernice. Sebastian Johnson voted for Bernice. Seth Bynes voted for Bernice. And Shruti Bhakmakar voted for Bernice. And Teresa Warman voted for Jody.
All right, thank you so much. We're not done yet. I want to thank all of the candidates who applied for the District 14 delegate seat. Your passion, desire, and commitment to serve the district's residents demonstrates the energy and dedication found throughout Montgomery County. Of course, on behalf of the MCDCC, we also want to thank Delegate Lukey, who's not here tonight, but we thank him for his service. His leadership will be missed, but we are thankful he will continue to serve Marylanders in Annapolis with the Moore Miller Administration. Note that there's a big question, when will the letter to the governor will be sent? It will be sent tonight. We've spoken to the governor's office, and they know that the vote is happening tonight or this morning. And they'll have it, but they said that they'll respond after 9:00 AM. So just note that. Ms. North, please, Miraco-North, please stay behind. We do need some information for you to log that in. As for the press statements, for members of the press that we have tonight, MCDCC will be making available a press release immediately, almost, if you wait about ten, fifteen minutes, shortly after this meeting. And note that if you have any additional questions, the spokesperson for the MCDCC is the chair. So if you have additional questions, please direct them my way. Pam Luckett will be fielding the press. Lastly, for those that, you know, all of the District 14 individuals and voters and leaders, everyone that got involved, we... Or District 14... Sorry, guys. We really appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts. And I think Shruti will resonate this, is that please, the backbone of the Democratic Party is our precinct organization. If that is not strong, we are not strong. And so while, you know, the strength and the energy is there, please sign up. We have more than enough opportunities available, and the need is really great if you understand the needs of District 14 and other districts across the county. And Scott, do we still need a group shot of the candidates? So if we... Where is Hafiza Rahman? Mr. Rahman?
He's just in the kitchen. He's in the kitchen.
Could you come back? We just need a picture of you. Please. And if there are any... Is anyone else needs to make an announcement? This is your opportunity to do so or hold your peace.
Looking front and center here?
The one with the everybody present.
And Delegate Kaiser?
Thank you. On behalf of the District 14 delegation, we welcome Bernice to the conference. We also want to extend to everyone who ran that we hope that you stay involved in District 14 and in our county. And again, thank you to the Senator Committee members. All three of us served at one time previous day on the Senator Committee, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Central Committee members, before you leave, please don't forget to help dismantle the... Yes. I get a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All right. Thank you very much for being a part of this.
You did a fantastic job.
We make it up on the fly.
I know how hard it disgusts me. I've done this thing, it's so hard.